Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask the pastor of New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, Dr. Andrew Owens, to lead us in a pleasurable allegiance.
Push that green button right there, pal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Owens. I had to do that for my mama. That's the only person I know that watches every meeting. That brings us to 2.3, approval of agenda. So moved to second, vote please. Mr. Abula?
Aye.
Esposito?
Aye.
Ossin Carey. And that brings us to 2.4, oath of office for re-elected and newly-elected board members. Prior to entering upon the duties of their office, all Board of Education members shall take the oath or affirmation required by law, the oath of office we administered to incumbents Myra Ceballos, Scott Wyatt, Dr. Wyatt, Felicia Alexander, and newly-elected member Michael Santos. One board member has been sworn in already, but she will be sworn in again ceremonially. At this point, I will turn it over to our Director of Communication, Ms. Goodwin.
President Tillman, good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Thank you to everyone who joined us for our special reception held on behalf of our newly-elected and re-elected Board of Education members. We are ready to begin our swearing and ceremony. Would the Board of Education, Student Board Members, Superintendent Ariano, and Cabinet, please come forward to take your seats in the reserved section here up front? We have designated seating area for our board members who are being sworn in this evening. And at this time, I'd like to welcome my Communications Manager, Maria Garcia.
Good evening. I would like to start by calling forward 5th District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., who will swear in Board Vice President, Mrs. Myra Ceballos, and Dr. Scott Wyatt. I'd also like to welcome Vice President Ceballos to please come forward.
You ready, Myra? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Myra Ceballos.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the State of California?
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And at this time, we invite Myra's family to please come forward for photos. And now, Board Member Dr. Scott Wyatt is next to take the oath. Dr. Wyatt, please come forward.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Dr. Scott Wyatt.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the State of California?
Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, we invite Dr. Wyatt's family to please come forward for photos. Thank you Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. And congratulations to Board Members Ceballos and Wyatt. I would now like to call forward Board Member Felicia Alexander, who will be sworn in by her mother. Her father will also come forward.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Isn't that all? Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye. Aye, Felicia Alexander.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of which I am about to enter?
Of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We now invite Felicia's family to please come forward for photos.
Everyone who's able to come down here, please do so, family and friends.
Congratulations to Felicia. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce Superintendent Mauricio Arellano, who will be swearing in newly-elected Board Member Michael Santos. Would trustee Michael Santos, please come forward to take the oath.
I instate your name.
I, Michael Santos.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Into?
Upon?
Upon.
Which I'm about to enter?
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, sir, welcome.
And we now invite Board Member Santos' family to please come forward for photos. Congratulations once again to our Board of Education members. With that, we conclude the swearing-in portion of our meeting. The Board of Education will now be seated for its annual reorganization meeting. Following that, we will be back to recognize some stellar individuals who are being honored tonight for helping SBCUSD shine bright. Thank you. And at this time, we will ask our Board and Cabinet to return to their seats at the dais.
Election 3, Annual Organizational Meeting of the San Bernardino Unified School District Board of Education. 3.1, Election of Officers and Assignment of Other Responsibilities. Education Code 35143 and Board of Education Bylaw 9100 requires certain actions with regard to the internal organization of the Board. At the annual organizational meeting, appointments will be made for Board President, Board Vice President, Board Secretary, and Assistant Secretary to the Board, and designation of Board Representative. 3.2, Election of President. I see Ms. Grande's light on.
Thank you President Tillman. At this time, I would like to nominate Myra Ceballos for Board Member, President. For Board President.
Your second?
I'd like the second out.
Ms. Medina's light is on?
Yeah, so traditionally, we've always had the Board Member serve two years. And so, I was gonna nominate Board President Danny Tillman. So that's been tradition from the Board. Typically, it's two years a Board President would serve. So, but it's already, there's already two votes. Yeah, you already have a motion.
So the motion is, we're moved to second to elect Member Myra Ceballos as President. Vote please. Mr. Ceballos, the new President? Mr. Santos, your vote please? Aye or nay?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to 3.3, Election of Board Vice President. Board nominations will be made for Board Vice President per Board Bylaw. The Vice President shall not serve more than two consecutive one-year terms. Vice President? Vice President Ceballos has served one year. Mrs. Alexander? Your light's on? Yeah. I nominate Mary Ellen Abaliz Grande as Vice President. Dr. Scott Wyatt?
Our second nomination?
Vote please. It has resolved that the Board appoints Ms. Mary Ellen Grande to serve as Vice President for then ensuing 2025 year. 3.4, Appointment of Board Secretary and Board Assistant Secretary. It has resolved that the Board of Education appoints Mauricio Arellano to serve as Board Secretary and Karen Cunningham as Board Assistant Secretary for then ensuing 2025 year. It further resolved the Board Secretary and Assistant Secretary be authorized to certify or attest to actions taken by the Board of Education whenever such certification or attestation is required for any purpose as prescribed by Education Code Sections 35250 and 35036.
Move.
Second. Vote passed. 3.5, Appointment of Designated Board Representatives. The Board President will make the following Board Member appointments. After all the appointments have been decided, the Board will vote on them in one action. Appointment of a Board Member to serve as the Board's Designated Representative to elect members to the County Committee on School District Organization. The committee has a major role in the review and approval of proposals to change school district organization in the county. A new Board Member needs to be selected. The Board President appoints? Do we have anybody that's interested in attending?
I may be, if nobody else is interested.
I would be interested as well. Okay, the Board? The Board President then appoints?
I apologize, is there two positions open or just one? Because if it's one, then I'll allow, I'll rescind so that way Felicia can serve.
There is only one. I currently sit on one, so I'll be stepping down.
Okay.
So wait, do we have Felicia and?
Yeah, but no, I can go ahead and I'll rescind my name so that way Felicia can serve. Alexander.
Do we have a consensus or a vote for that?
Well, I'll make a formal motion, a motion to appoint Board Member Alexander to the CSBA Delegate Assembly.
Board President, we will vote on all these when you've done selecting them. We'll do one vote for all of them.
Okay, so the Board President appoints Ms. Felicia Alexander for then ensuing 2025 year. Appointments to the CSBA Delegate Assembly are for two-year terms. The Delegate Assembly provides a vital link in CSBA's governance structure, providing policy directions, ensuring CSBA reflects the interests of school districts based on District ADA. The Board is entitled to two delegates. Current delegates are Myra Ceballos and Mickey Chahusky. Ms. Ceballos's term ends on March 31st, 2025. Therefore, a new delegate needs to be selected. In addition, a replacement delegate is required to finish out Ms. Chahusky's term, which ends on March 31st, 2026. So do we have a second person? Interested, so I'm stepping down. Excuse me, Madam President, are we doing CSBA? CSBA Delegate Assembly. That's what I'm expressing interest to do, yes. There's two seats, so I'm stepping down.
I could serve on that one, if nobody else wants to.
Thank you.
Madam President, which one's doing the full year and which one's finishing out Ms. Chahusky's?
I could finish out Ms. Chahusky's. Okay, so the Board President appoints Ms. Alexander Felicia for a two-year term effective April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2022. And then the Board President appoints Ms. Abigail Medina to finish out the term of Mickey Chahusky effective through March 31st, 2026. Appointment to the District's Policy Subcommittee. This Subcommittee meets monthly as needed to review new and updated Board Policies and consists of three Board Members and one alternate. Current Board Representatives are Abigail Rosales Medina, who has served for eight years, Myra Ceballos, who has served for four, and Felicia Alexander, who has served for one. An alternate is needed.
You can remove my light, I'm sorry.
So everybody else remains? Okay, we'll just add Ms. Mary Ellen Grande as the alternate. Appointment to the District's Budget Subcommittee. This Subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three Board Members and one alternate. Current Board Representatives are Danny Tillman for the past four years and Felicia Alexander for the past year. And a third member and alternate is needed. Abigail Rosales Medina as alternate has served for three years. So we need one more and an alternate? Ms. Medina?
I can, if someone else, if there's two individuals interested in being an alternate, I can step down if there's more than one interested.
Mr. Santos?
Thank you. Learning. I'm interested in the Budget Subcommittee.
Anybody want to step as alternate? Okay, so we're keeping Ms. Abigail Medina for alternate and we're adding Mr. Santos as the third person. Appointment to the District's Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee. The Subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three Board Members and one alternate. Current Board Representatives include Myra Sabios has served for the past three years, Mary Ellen Grande has served for two years, and a third member is needed. Scott Wyatt has served as alternate for two years. I'm open to stepping down myself from this one if anybody's interested.
If it's okay, I can go ahead and keep going there, doing that.
I don't mind stepping down. Is this curriculum? If maybe Mr. Santos or somebody's interested in that.
I'll still stay.
Okay, so we will keep myself, Myra Sabios, Ms. Mary Ellen Grande, and Dr. Scott Wyatt as alternate. So I apologize, I did skip Charter School Subcommittee, so I'll go back to that. Appointment to the District's Charter School Subcommittee. This Subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three Board Members and one alternate. Current Board Representatives are Myra Sabios, who has served for the past year, Mary Ellen Grande, and Felicia Alexander, who have both served for two years. An alternate is needed. And I'm open to stepping down from this one as well if anybody's interested.
It's a very interesting committee if anyone is really interested. If not, Abigail and I are doing a great job, I think. But I'd like to share it with, you know, other people too.
That means add my name to as an alternate.
We'll add Ms. Abigail Medina as an alternate for the Charter Subcommittee.
Okay, so everything else remain the same then?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moving on to appoint to the District's Facility Subcommittee. This Subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three Board Members and one alternate. Current Board Representatives are Dr. Scott Wyatt, who has served for seven years, Abigail Rosales Medina, and Mary Ellen Grande, both have served for two years. An alternate is needed.
Madam President, I would be interested in serving as an alternate. Unless Mr. Santos?
Yeah.
Two alternates?
So one alternate was needed. I'm, oh, I'm not part of this one. Okay. So then, Ms. Rosales, you're going to stay? Okay, and then we'll add, are we adding you as an alternate? Okay, yes. So everybody's staying and we're just adding Mr. Santos as alternate. Appointment to the District's IT Communications Subcommittee. This Subcommittee meets on an as-needed basis and consists of three Board Members. Current Board Representatives are Danny Tillman, who has served for eight years, Ms. Mary Ellen Grande for two years, and a third member and alternate are needed.
I love that committee, it's my favorite. I love Mary Rome.
Do we have anybody that wants to serve as the third member and/or alternate?
I would be interested in serving as the alternate.
I can do, I can be the third member. Appointment to the Education Bridge Committee. This Subcommittee, which was formed by San Bernardino City, consists of three Board Members and one alternate. It currently does not meet. Dr. Scott Wyatt and Mary Ellen Grande are current representatives and a third member is needed. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina is alternate.
I can be included as the third person and I'm hoping that we will meet because we haven't in a long time.
Yeah. Ms. Alexander?
You can keep me there.
But do you need additional?
An alternate.
I would like to be the alternate.
So we're adding Ms. Felicia Alexander as alternate and Ms. Medina as the third person. Okay, and then we'll move to vote.
I need a motion?
White, yeah, thank you.
I motion to approve President's recommendations for appointees.
Second it? Motion moved. 3.6, annual consideration of Board Policies. Board Bylaw 9310 states, "The Board shall review certain policies annually as required by Education Code 35160.5. If no revisions are deemed necessary, the Board minutes shall nevertheless indicate that the review was conducted. Other policies shall be monitored and reviewed as specified in the policy itself or as needed to reflect changes in the law or district circumstances." Do you have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Vote please. Motion passed. Moving on, 4.0, annual meeting of the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation Board of Directors, 4.1. Reses as the SBCUSD Board of Education. As required by the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation Bylaws, the Board of Directors of the Corporation shall have an annual meeting for the purpose of organization, selection of officers, and transaction of any other business. According to the Bylaws, annual meetings shall be held immediately following the first organizational meeting of the year for the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education. It is appropriate at this time to, sorry, it is appropriate at this time to reses as the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District and convene as the Board of Directors of the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation. We'll take the reses at this time. Take a recess. 4.3, directors present. The Corporation President will acknowledge all directors present. All members are here. 4.4, designation and election of officers. The Corporation President will ask for nominations for the Corporation's President and Vice President. A vote will be taken on all appointments as one action. It resolved? Myra Sabios be elected as the Corporation's President. Be it also resolved that Ms. Mary Ellen Grande be elected as the Corporation's Vice President. Be it resolved that Mr. Mauricio Arayano be appointed as the Corporation's Secretary/Treasure, and be it further resolved that Ms. Karen Cunningham be appointed as the Corporation's Assistant Secretary. So moved. Second. Motion carried. 4.5, public comment.
There are no comments.
Thank you. 4.6, resolution of the Board of Directors of the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation approving a ground lease, a lease agreement, an assignment agreement, and a trust agreement with respect to the execution and delivery of San Bernardino City Unified School District certificates of participation evidencing principal in an aggregate amount of not to exceed 95, 95? Million and authorizing related actions, business services. Do I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Vote please. Dr. Wyatt? Motion passed. So we will close this meeting at this time for the Corporation and we will reopen at 4.7. I'm sorry.
Need a?
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of the San Bernardino Schools Financing Corporation.
Second.
We will reconvene, 5.0, special presentations and recognitions. 5.1, recognition of CSBA's.
President Sabios, I haven't got all the votes yet, hold on.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Jumping the gun here.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Motion passed. Reconvening, 5.0, special presentations and recognitions. 5.1, recognition of CSBA's 2024 Golden Quill Award winner. The Golden Quill Awards are presented by the California School Boards Association to recognize outstanding education, journalism, and highlight the essential role of journalists' play in increasing understanding of the objectives, operations, and accomplishments, challenges, and opportunities related to public schools. Mr. Wallace Allen with the West Side Story Newspaper will be recognized with the Certificate of Excellence in reporting for his fair, insightful, and accurate reporting on public school news.
Well, thank you again, audience, for being here tonight. As we continue our celebrations, at this time, we ask our Board to proceed in front of the dais while our Executive Cabinet greets our honorees here at the ramp. We would like to start our honor with honoring a longtime member of our community, Mr. Wallace Allen. Please come forward, Mr. Allen. Wallace Allen, the esteemed editor of the West Side Story Newspaper and host of the weekly radio show, The Empire Talks Back, has been a powerful voice and advocate for our community for decades. Through his leadership in journalism, Mr. Allen has consistently championed education, justice, and equity, providing a platform for critical issues and amplifying voices that too often go unheard. His unwavering commitment to truth and service has earned him the prestigious Golden Quill Award from the California School Boards Association, a recognition of his remarkable contributions to both the press and public education. Mr. Allen, we are honored to present this award to you. Mr. Allen, we are honored to present this award to you. Let's give Mr. Wallace Allen another round of applause. Okay, we have just one more celebration this evening. As we conclude another year of service to our students and community, we are incredibly honored to take a moment to recognize outstanding individuals who have made a lasting impact on the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Tonight, we celebrate their dedication, passion, and commitment to our students, families, and schools. Each of these honorees has gone above and beyond to contribute to the success of our district, and we're proud to present them with a special crystal award in recognition of their service. I'd also like to point out that these five dedicated individuals were recently recognized at the Cal State San Bernardino 2024 Educational Leadership Summit. And so tonight, we are proud to also honor them with our own recognition. Honorees, when I call your name, I invite you to please come forward using the ramp to my right here to receive a beautiful award. We also invite you to come forward with your loved ones if they are here with you for a photo opportunity. Our first educational leadership summit honoree is Amanda Armandarez. She is the Outstanding Classified Employee Award recipient. Amanda works as a secretary in the employee development department. Thank you, Amanda, for your hard work. Congratulations, Amanda. The Outstanding Instructional Leader Award goes to Director of Employee Development, Mary Pierce. Mary is a former school principal in the district, and she is now responsible for ensuring that district employees have the skills they need to thrive in their profession. Congratulations, Mary, on this honor. You certainly deserve it. Congratulations, Mary. Our next honoree is Ms. Davana Robertson. She is the deserving recipient of the Outstanding Parent Leader Award. As many of you know, Davana is very involved in the education of her children, and she is also actively involved in the District African American Advisory Committee, better known as DAAA-C. We congratulate Davana on this award. Congratulations, Davana. Serrano Middle School Vice Principal Shanita Stevenson is the Outstanding School Site Leader Award recipient. Shanita, you are truly deserving of this honor. Let's hear it one more time for Shanita Stevenson. Our fifth and final honoree is our outgoing board president, Danny Tillman. He received the Outstanding District Leader Award. Mr. Tillman's tenure as a Board of Education member spans 29 years, and he is currently one of the longest-serving Board of Education members in the state of California. So let's give it, give our hands for Mr. Tillman. Well, congratulations to all of tonight's honorees, and thank you for your dedication and hard work. Yes. So your contributions remind us of the power of collaboration and the importance of investing in the students and families of our district. Audience, this concludes our special recognitions for this evening. SBCUSD wishes all of you a wonderful and safe holiday break. Now we'll move forward with the rest of tonight's agenda. Thank you very much.
Okay, 5.3 resolution and recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I will have Mr. Santos read that for us, please.
Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the leading civil rights advocate of his time, spearheading the civil rights movement in the United States during the 1950s and 1960s, earning worldwide recognition as an eloquent spokesperson for equality and nonviolence. Whereas Dr. King helped organize the March on Washington during which he delivered his moving "I Have a Dream" speech on August 28, 1963. And whereas during his acceptance speech for the 1964 Nobel Peace Prize, Dr. King said, "I have the audacity to believe that the people that peoples everywhere can have three meals a day for their bodies, education and culture for their minds, and dignity, equality, and freedom for their spirits." And whereas Dr. King also helped organize the Selma to Montgomery marches in 1965, which brought attention to advocacy for passage of the Voting Rights Act that year to guarantee all African-American citizens the right to vote. And as whereas Dr. King paid the ultimate price when he was assassinated on April 4, 1968, and was posthumously awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom and the Congressional Gold Medal. And whereas to remember that Dr. King's life, work, and dream, a national holiday was first observed on January 20, 1986, and was later declared to be official officially observed annually on the third Monday in January. And whereas on this national holiday honoring Dr. King throughout the year, we celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 20, 2025, and encourages students, staff, community members, and all Americans to live out his teachings as we continue to work for the day when dignity and humanity of every person is respected.
So moved. Second. Vote please. Motion passed. 6.0 public comments. 6.1 receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. First public comment, Mr. Ben Pratt.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, for your service.
Thank you.
Most of you know me, Mr. Santos. I'm looking forward to getting to know you and working with you. I just wanted to come here today and talk about a meeting I had with the secondary education staff here in the district today. The IBW has agreed to double our pre-apprenticeship size and serve more students here. And we will be providing a direct interview process. Applying to the Electricians Union can sometimes be a one-year-long process. But we have decided that we are going to kind of complete this pipeline and make it easier for our kids that graduate from these high schools to get these jobs and rebuild this place. I always thank the board, you know, for the time. But I also want to add another thank you to Mr. Tom Pace. He and I have been, you know, working behind the scenes on some things. And he has been nothing but a professional and a great guy to work with, a partner. We don't agree on every, every detail, but we both care about these kids. I know this board cares about these kids. And I am so proud to be working with you guys. And I just want to thank you guys over and over and over again for allowing us to put this curriculum in these schools. And for the kids that can go to college, that can afford it, God bless them. For the ones that can't, I promise a five-year debt-free education that ends in a six-figure income. And our kids need to have this work. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Sorry, we are fixing our timer.
The timer's working up here. I don't know why it's not showing down there, but I, it's working up here.
Okay, great. So just let us know. Okay, up, up next, Mr. Mrs. Cristina Marquez.
Good evening, President Zabaios, board members, and cabinet. My name is Cristina M. Marquez, and I'm a lifelong resident of the city of San Bernardino. But not only do I live here, I'm currently a fifth-grade teacher at Fairfax Elementary, but I have also taught fourth grade, a four-five combo, and a five-six combo. All at Fairfax Elementary. I'm an active member of this community. In other words, I am a stakeholder. I have often heard Mr. Tillman say, and other district employees, "Once a Cardinal, always a Cardinal." I am not a Cardinal, but I am an Aquinas High School Falcon. There are other district employees who are fellow Falcons, and I found a new one tonight. Mary Rhone Goodwin is a Falcon. Former board member Mickey DeHusky was an Aquinas Falcon. Assistant Superintendent, who was then Anna Vega, now Applegate, was an Aquinas Falcon, and she is an alumni as well. And San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Ted Alejandre. Aquinas identified Fairfax Elementary because we both have Falcons as our mascots. And then the connection was reinforced when they found alumni here at that campus, myself. So right now, I would like to give a big thank you to Mr. Raymond Reyes, a teacher and director of student activities at Aquinas, who coordinated fundraising by his students to purchase six pallets of food and deliver them to Fairfax Elementary. I also want to extend a huge thank you to the Aquinas students who helped deliver and unload those six pallets of food. SBCUSD and Aquinas now has forged a connection that when we work together, we can benefit not just each other, but our communities as well. I also want to give a shout out to the unsung heroes of Fairfax, who are rarely recognized or thanked, who put together 300 bags of food that were distributed to Fairfax families and our surrounding neighborhood community. A few deserve a special recognition, such as Rosemary Rojas and Tamisha Cole, two outstanding and dedicated recreation aides. But most of all, to Ms. Jamie Kellum, our program facilitator. She coordinated the packaging of the food for distribution. Additionally, the Aquinas contributions were so abundant that they could be shared with other schools and included the United Way. Stater Brothers Markets also deserves a special thank you for donating the bags in which the food was given. Next, I would like to thank Mr. Rafael Trujillo of the Rialto City Council, who generously donated 12 turkeys to be given to the Fairfax Falcon families. And most of all, the Fairfax teachers, who donated potatoes, stuffings, and veggies to complete a family dinner. Over the past few years, Mr. Trujillo has also donated boots for our fifth graders who go up to science camp. Speaking of science camp, thank you to Mrs. Elena Marsh and Santa Claus Incorporated for providing winter jackets, gloves, socks, sweaters, and beanies for our students to wear at camp. I am respectfully acting, asking that letters of gratitude be sent by the board to Aquinas High School, Mr. Raymond Reyes, the students of Aquinas, Ms. Jamie Kellum. Ms. Jamie Kellum, Ms. Rosemary Rojas, Ms. Tamisha Cole, Ms. Elena Marsh, Santa Claus Inc., and Mr. Rafael Trujillo for their generosity and their hard work in supporting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Steven Figueroa.
Good afternoon. Congratulations. I'm an education advocate. Many of you saw the newspaper article of the deliberate indifference of your employees, your HR department, your Title IX compliant, your principals, of a little girl who was raped and nobody cared. I came to some of you board members for help, and you ignored it. Hopefully, now that we have a woman in there, you'll comply with the settlement agreement that everyone here should have for sexual harassment that you're not complying with. To this day, she's still being stalked at school. We're filing some more Title IX complaints, and you're not taking measures to stop it. Rape is wrong. Is there a woman here that won't agree with me? Is there a father here that would not be angry if your little girl was raped at school and you came to them and they covered it up? I have a right to be angry, because I'd be angry for you and your children. She continues to struggle. We came to the assistant superintendent. We came to others. We don't need the same policies you had in Redlands. That was destructive when you wouldn't meet with parents on such issues. You passed it off to your attorneys. We can't talk about it because it's in litigation, yet she still struggles. And none of you have reached out to the family to say, "I'm sorry." She couldn't stay because it was too much. She left. She was with me. She left, and she says, "I can't do this." So I'm here for the voice of the children who have no voice. Gil Navarro would be here right with me. Victoria Baca would be here with me, and others. We started out together in the late eighties. We helped many of you in your campaigns, yet when I came to you, if you don't have a copy of the findings of fact, it's public information from the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, you should get a copy, because you're completely out of compliance. Nobody complied with Title VI, Title VII, or Title IX. We're filing more investigations and hope that you hire outside firms to investigate, because your employees are biased, they're prejudiced, they discriminate, and when a little girl cries out, nobody heard her. We have our own Anne Frank here. She's a little Hispanic girl who cried out rape and nobody heard her. And once she cried out, they put her up for suspension for being raped in school. Who wouldn't be upset about that? Who wouldn't be upset about that? You should be if you have children. Every little girl in this district is in danger because you don't comply with Title IX. We're willing to meet with you if you want, but Mauricio, I've tried to meet with you in Redlands and others. It seems that you're too busy. You know, I go to DC and meet with everybody, but you're the busiest man in the world. So I'm asking you, Board President, will you meet with me and Mom and say, "This was wrong"? Will somebody stand up and say, "I'm sorry. We're going to make this right"? You have a number of employees, if you read this, that need to be investigated by an outside firm. I don't know how to say that if you're women and you say, "I stand up for women's rights," how did you ignore it? How did you allow your Title IX policies to be out of compliance? How did you allow your Title VI if you're going to champion Dr. Martin Luther King? How did you allow these policies to go dismissed and minimize and allow this to occur? Shame on all of you. Some of you should resign, because I came to you and you did nothing to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Joslin. Joslin?
Okay. Hello, board members. I am a member of the community surrounding Pacuma K-8 Middle School. Our three children attend Pacuma, and the reason we are all here today is to speak about the unfair treatment our daughters continue to experience in the after-school program. They feel harassed by the person in charge. They feel as though they don't have a voice. And lastly, statements regarding incidents they have been accused of being involved in are quite inaccurate and frankly, not factual. I've tried to communicate our concerns with the principal since the second week of school. The principal seemed to be understanding and in agreement with the mishandling of the incidents, but to my family's and I dismay, when my husband and I went to the first and only meeting with the principal last week, she told us, and it became quite evident very soon on, that the whole purpose of the meeting was to tell us that our students would be removed from the program if something else occurs. However, nothing else has been dealt with in regards to that situation. It's totally unfair. I feel it is a violation as a community. I live in the community, and if my daughters are being harassed by a male, by a staff member of an after-school program, and they don't have any other issues during the day, why is it all of a sudden they're going to be removed? How about we actually have a discussion, talk about some of the policies and procedures at the after-school program, and really try to help them out and all the other kids, because they're not the only ones that feel unfairly dealt with when issues and incidents occurred. And I don't like that. It's very disheartening, very disheartening, because they are good kids. They really are. One is on the honor roll, and one is doing her best to get on the honor roll. And my son is on the honor roll. He does very well in school as well. So for them to be mistreated is just ridiculous. And it really, really unnerves me, because we tried to do the right thing by meeting with the principal and speaking with her, and for her to dismiss my husband and I's concerns was just wrong. It was just wrong. And let me tell you, last year, when we had an issue at Pacuma with the after-school program, it's always after-school program, it was dealt with so quickly, so swiftly, so seamlessly. The assistant superintendent reached out to me. We talked about it. We addressed it. They cleared it up. It was great. This year, we've been ignored. We have all type of communication with emails going back and forth, and it's just ridiculous and, like I said, very disheartening. So I would like some assistance. I would like some direction, because our emails are going ignored. And we just want this addressed and handled so that our daughters are protected and feel heard, because they do have a voice.
Thank you. Next up is Andrea Schindler. Sorry, I'm going to butcher this. Schindler?
Good evening, esteemed members of the board and the cabinet. My name is Andrea Schindler, and I'm a twenty-three veteran teacher from Urbida Elementary School. For the past twenty years, I've also had the privilege and the blessing of teaching and leading the Earth Savers After School Environmental Club. For many of those years, I have also been blessed to have Angelica Gonzalez and Elena Villegas, also teachers at Urbida Elementary School, to co-teach the club alongside me. During the past twenty years, we have participated in the National Energy Education Development Project, or Project Need, which is all about kids teaching kids about sustainability and alternative forms of energy. This past school year, we submitted our project, and we won California School of the Year as well as National Runner-Up. As a result, we were invited to go to Washington, DC to receive our awards. This evening, some of the Earth Savers came to speak to you about our club and their experience in the club as well as their trip to Washington, DC. So first up, we have Michelle.
Hello, my name is Michelle, and last year, I was a fifth-grade student at Urbida Elementary. I was in the Earth Savers After School Club. We learned about forms of energy, and we started a school-wide recycling program. We sent our project to Need, the National Energy Education Development Project, and we won California State's School of the Year and National Runner-Up. We got to go to Washington, DC to get our award. My favorite thing about Washington, DC was when we met other students from different states. Also, I enjoyed it when we went to memorials in different museums. It was very fun, and we learned more about our country and the history of our country. Thank you for your time and your support.
Next up, we have Isabella.
Hi, my name is Isabella, and I currently attend Caesar Chavez Middle School. I've been part of the Earth Savers After School Club at Urbida Elementary since fourth grade. Earth Savers taught me about how to save energy as well as how to recycle correctly. Also, as part of the Earth Savers Club, we learned how energy impacts our life. One of our assignments was to do a project about how water makes energy. We share and show the school what we learned in our projects during Earth Day. After that, we submitted our projects to National Energy Education Development Program Need and won California School of the Year. Another activity we did was to fundraise and ask for donations to travel to Washington, DC to receive our award. Thanks to the relatives, parents, staff, and other school board members for your donation. You made this trip possible. During the summer, we received our awards in Washington, DC, representing San Bernardino, California. In one of our conferences, we participated in making a movable vunicle out of recyclable items, and my partner and I won the People's Choice at the elementary level. While in the capital city, we visited historical structures such as Lincoln Memorial, Fjords Theater, the Capitol Building, and Arlington Nation Cemetery, just to mention a few. My favorite part of the trip was when we went to the cruise. The food was very good. It was really fun traveling to Washington, DC and learning about our country with my friends. Thank you for your amazing support.
And next up, we have Daniela.
Hi, my name is Daniela from Urbida Elementary School. I'm in the Earth Savers After School Club. Last year, we learned how to recycle correctly and how to teach others about renewable forms of energy so they can learn how to help in their own ways. Also, we spent lots of our time working on projects to teach our school community about renewable resources, and we worked in our school garden. We submitted our projects to the National Energy Education Development Program Need and won California School of the Year National Runner-Up. We got to go to Washington, DC to receive our awards. My favorite thing about Washington, DC was when we went to the museums like the Smithsonian, United States National Air and Space Museum. This spaces it with their words, with screens to see and learn about other plans. We also had a dinner cruise on the Potomac River, and we made pictures of cars of cardboard with students from other states. We enjoyed this trip a lot, thanks to our teachers and you for your help. Thank you for listening and for your support.
And last up, we have Gianna.
Hi, and good evening, board members. My name is Gianna. I'm from Urbida Elementary School. I am in the Earth Savers After School Club. Last year, we made a project about a source of energy. My project was about wind energy, so I learned how to use that form of energy. We submitted our project to the National Energy Education Development Program Need and won California School of the Year, and we're also the National Runner-Up. We got to go to Washington, DC to receive our award. In Washington, DC, we also learned about the Holocaust at the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum, and it was a good experience for me because we got to learn about what they did to the Jewish people. My favorite thing about Washington, DC was that when we went to Lincoln Memorial, because in the 1860s, the northern and southern parts of the United States fought against each other in the Civil War, and Abraham Lincoln helped a lot of slaves. Along the way, we went to see the Washington Monument. It was an unforgettable experience. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to listen to our projects.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing, and congratulations. Up next, we have two comments that are... One is for 12.2, but I would like to ask and see if they would like to make their comment now. This is, I believe, Mr. Arthur. It's a... I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to read, but I think the last name is Congo. It's for 12.2 item, 12.2 CCSA. I'm sorry, can you say your name?
Yeah, Congo, sorry.
Congo, okay. Do you want to make your comment now?
Yeah, I'll make my comment now. Arthur Congo, Director of Local Advocacy with the California Char Schools Association, just speaking in support of Public Safety Academy's five-year renewal. Glad that the staff was collaborative with Public Safety Academy and recommending a five-year approval as a middle-track school. They're entitled to a five-year renewal. We think they meet all the minimum legal requirements as outlined in the staff report to receive a five-year renewal. So just here speaking in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment is for item 12.6. Same thing, if you'd like to make your comment now. And this is for Edwin Delgado.
Thank you, Board President. Good evening, Board President, board members, cabinet members, and distinguished guests. My name is Edwin Delgado. I'm here representing Fifth District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., and I'm here to speak on item 12.6 on a certain project that Pacuma K-8 will be receiving field lights, where the supervisor was proud to contribute $1.1 million for that investment. And it's going to serve as a joint-use facility for our Rosina Ranch community, which is an unincorporated area that we represent, as well as the students and community of Pacuma K-8. We are continually grateful for the effort and work and investments that's being made across the community, the city of San Bernardino and around the areas. We know that the city of San Bernardino Unified School District is spearheading a lot of projects that are making an impact directly to our students, and we are grateful for that. And on behalf of the Fifth District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., we are excited for the continued partnership between the school district and the county of San Bernardino. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Up next, we have a group of six or more speakers on topic, CSO employee. You're welcome to come up now. And just as a reminder, you do have thirty minutes as a group. But each person, each speaker, gets five minutes.
Can we revise that? Rather than everybody repeating the same statements and things for six times, I can take no longer than fifteen minutes, hopefully ten or less. And I have one other speaker that's five.
Mr. Tillman?
The board's policy is that each person gets five minutes. The total cumulative for one subject is thirty minutes, but each individual only gets five minutes.
Yeah, we were told somebody, we could get yielded time. We have six people come up. Okay, so five minutes.
Five minutes to each person, maximum of a thirty minutes total, but each individual gets five minutes.
All right, well, at five minutes, I guess I'll stop, but I think the gist of the situation might be conveyed. Thank you, board members, Superintendent Ariano. I'm here this evening to discuss current state of business from my perspective as a nine-month classified campus security officer with sixteen years of experience. I approach this discussion in both paths. I approach this discussion with both passion and commitment to common sense, firm yet fair approach. I have shared with many colleagues in the past, we are fundamentally, fundamentally in the human being business of supporting young people. We must acknowledge that we are currently underperforming. First of all, I'd like to address our department's situation. Our union has raised concerns regarding the lack of responses to requiring inquiries of staffing, daily operations, and available manpower. The individuals most directly impacted by this, these issues are the employees within that department. We are facing challenges such as bullying, harassment, poor communication, lack of accountability, and most important, the need for transparency, as highlighted in our pillars of trust. Unfortunately, the existing change of command does not effectively facilitate discussions about real concerns and problems. Approximately six years ago, Dr. Marsen implemented changes by placing the Chief of School Police on the Cabinet. This initiative was accompanied by a commitment to zero, commitment to zero tolerance with the expectation that the issuance of tickets and suspensions would be significantly reduced through the introduction of restorative justice practices. However, in subsequent years, we have seen a substantial shift that has left many sites and departments struggling, while others fortunately to have strong leaders and teamwork have managed to survive. Questions arose among administrators about the potential of, of school police issuing tickets. SROs and CSOs were left wondering if, if somebody was going to be suspended. In many environments I've encountered, team cohesion has been compromised. Issues such as blame shifting, cliques, and tendency to overlook problems have emerged. I've, I recall an administrator on one site responding, "This is the public school system," when I raised concerns about the increasing chaos. Another principal expressed frustrations when I questioned the rationale behind excessive preparations for superintendent visit, asking, "Why do we create a yellow brick road for them to follow?" I emphasize that I strive to manage my responsibilities effectively every day, and I would seek help i- if I needed rather than concealing difficulties. Several factors undermine the, the functioning of well-operating team environment, including insufficient training and absenteeism. Though most individuals come to work with good intentions and a desire to contribute positively, many are feeling overwhelmed and frustrated. Like our mandated training programs, say each year, highlighted unhappy, mistreated employees are more likely to miss work or become disengaged. CSOs play a vital role on campus, serving as a valuable resource to foster, for fostering meaningful connections with students. We collaborate closely with teachers and counselors to support individual, uh, students and activity, uh, contribute to main, I'm sorry. We collaborate closely with teachers and counselors to support individual students and actively contribute to maintaining a safe environment. Despite our significant contributions, we often face disrespect from students, administration, and parents without adequate support. Recently, we have been referred to negatively by advocates. Additionally, the Commission has established a manual outlining disciplinary guidelines such as verbal and written warnings. They have not been adhered to in our, our department. When issues arise, rather we, we receive a, a letter of reprimand. This necessitates submitting a rebuttal to defend ourselves against what may be perceived as unjust actions. Yet there appears to be little follow-up from the Commission or HR to rectify any discrepancies. Although our department has established MOU guidelines to promote positive working conditions, these too are frequently overlooked. Fortunately, our representation has provided a safeguard against bullying and harassment. Well, nearing my retirement, but not officially submitting my paperwork, I received a call from my supervisor during this last summer break. He said, "Since you're retiring, we're going to retransfere to a high school." I said, "You can't just move me like that. I choose not to move." I was then told I was being moved to Indian Springs High School with no choice. An email letter confirmed this directive. Thankfully, our union again intervened and affirmed that such move was not permissible under our MOU. Recently, myself and other CSOs has been put on paid leave for doing our jobs under our Policy and Procedures Manual. Imagine removed from your campus and not told anything except, "Come get your check," and you're pulled off electronic payroll, as well as not allowed to step foot on any district property. This means I can't visit my wife, my daughter, or my granddaughter who work in attendance schools in the district. I coached baseball as well, and the team I worked hard to get ready for the upcoming baseball season suffered because I was told I couldn't even coach then. I was removed from my campus because I searched a kid that was believed to be within a group that had lit explosives in our restrooms at our school several times. After almost two and a half months without any updates, there was no wrongdoing except that I was maybe have been verbally loud. If any of you would like to have any conversations with, which we tried to do in the past that just didn't happen, feel free to come ask me and talk to me openly and honestly and transparent in my sight tomorrow for any one of us. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Keith Clo, Keith Clokey.
And what school side are you at?
I'm at Shannon Hills, and I'd like to say that environment that I was at the last couple of years has very much cleaned up due to the leadership and asking for our help and support and actually implementing things that the team wants to do and is operating phenomenally. The culture's changed tremendously from the years past. And I'm sad to leave it, but I, I cannot tolerate this any longer.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Superintendent Ariano. I'd like to start by saying thank you for taking the time to hear us last time CSOs came before you voicing concern and for working with CSEA to help find common ground and work together to resolve some of those issues. Although it may seem like huge strides were made, there is still much more work to be done to cross the hurdle before us. As we continue to monitor the news as much of us do on a daily basis, we are faced with the reality that schools are no longer the safe place they once were years ago. So why does our district continue to sit back idled in a time of concern while other districts near and far are adapting and implementing necessary changes to ensure the safety of their campuses? I'm now currently assigned to one of the highest populated high schools in our district, a campus that is servicing almost three thousand students. Safety on campus should always be the highest priority alongside students being able to obtain, obtain the best education possible. But this is not possible if they are not provided a safe space to do so. And unfortunately, with the lack of adaptability, resources, and action, we are currently falling behind. Many of the campuses in our district were not built to hold the capacity of students that we currently serve, and this has become a safety concern, especially at the high schools. One example is lack of restroom accessibility. We have over fifteen hundred girls on campus, but only ten restroom stalls for them to use. Twelve hundred boys and only three stalls total to use, which has become an issue for those needing to use the restrooms, but can't because of groups of kids that go in them to just hang out and or smoke. The reality of it is, we're short-staffed and overpowered. I've been with the district as a CSO for seven years and not once had to deploy pepper spray until this year, when the kids realized that they could overpower us. We were trying to break up a fight. The CSOs were cornered. They kept coming closer and I had to deploy. After I deployed the pepper spray, kids tried to fight me. Kids were in front trying to fight. Parents came on campus trying to fight. We're supposed to be an anti-bullying institution, and yet I have seen from the time some young ladies have been in middle school to high school, be bullied by the same person and nothing be done. Their parent came on campus trying to fight our students with their daughter. Nothing has been done. She tried to fight me. She has already been charged with assault before at a middle school campus for trying to fight the CSOs and spray us with peppers, pepper spray. This time she came on campus, nothing was done. It's concerning for our safety when we have lack of accountability from people. There's no consequence. We have lack of management helping us. They should be on our campuses with us. I understand they get busy, but they need to come help monitor and curb the situations that we're having so they can meet with you guys. So we don't have to keep coming to the board and asking you guys for help. They should be doing that on our behalf, and we don't have that. We have kids that are constantly coming on campus with vapes, weapons, doing inappropriate things when they make their way into parts of campus they shouldn't be. And we're not at our assigned areas because we're being called to come and try to clear out restrooms where people are hovering to smoke their vapes. And so areas that we're supposed to be into, uh, monitoring are left unmonitored. So kids are able to leave, they're able to go on the football field and do whatever they're doing. I won't discuss that here, but there's, there's no action being taken. And when there is, I mean, I understand our suspension rates are high, but when there is action being taken, our admin is getting hovered down by their bosses to stop suspending, find another way. But when these kids are repeat offenders, what more are we supposed to do? When they're cussing us out and threatening us and telling me they're going to slap me or they're going to have their parents come up and harm me, what else are we supposed to do? They keep saying, oh, they've done nothing wrong. They can't be suspended for threats, so then my safety is not a priority. We have six CSOs at our campus right now. We were told we were getting a seventh months ago. We have not gotten that transfer yet. We are pushing to hopefully get an eighth or ninth because we need more help. There's too many kids. There's too much real estate. We need more eyes. We need more support. And we need you guys to help us do that. We have a CSO that's still on administrative leave. He's been on leave since April. He could be helping us service our campuses right now, but he's still on leave. Like, what are we doing here? This is supposed to be a safe space. Why do we not have metal detectors?
Just remind me of your name?
Sabrina Duran.
Thank you.
And I think that's going to be it because Clokey was speaking on behalf of some others unless we can yield time.
That's it?
Not yield time. Well, each person gets five.
I'd like, I'd like to just one minute just to specifically say, you have a handout that I didn't get a chance to say.
Point of order, Madam President.
We sat through everybody's.
The policy is five minutes per person, and it's obvious why. A person can't come down with five people and say, "I'm speaking for the five people." That means I'm giving everybody thirty minutes to speak.
I just want to say your handout is our policy procedure on our website, and that is not even close to what's happening in the last six years.
I will pull up the board policy and, and I will, uh, look at that because I, I, I believe, I was under a different impression. I believed that, um, you could yield time.
Not yield time. The policy states. Thirty minutes total for one subject. Thank you very much.
Next up. I have, um, Real Journeys Academy. I don't have a name. It came in a packet of three.
You want to close the public comments because I believe those comments are connected to the public hearing that we have scheduled.
So, thank you so much for that. We are closing public comment now and we're moving to seven point O public hearing. Seven point one public hearing regarding charter renewal petition for Entrepreneur High School. On October tenth, twenty twenty four, Mr. Randall Josen Ron, led petitioner for Entrepreneur High School, lead petitioner for Entrepreneur High School, submitted a charter renewal petition to the Charter School Operations Department. A public hearing will be held to consider the level of support for the charter petition.
Good evening, um, President Zabaos, and congratulations for the move over one seat and Vice President, uh, Mary Ellen Abiles Grande. I'd also like to welcome our new board member, Mr. Michael Santos, um, and all the rest of our board members that are returning as well as our cabinet and our community. My name is Ernestine Hopwood. I am currently the Director of our Charter School Operations here in San Bernardino City Unified School District. We do have twelve charters in our district currently that we oversee, um, and we have approved. Tonight, we have two public hearings. One is for a renewal, and that is the one that I'm speaking to you currently about. We will also have a public hearing immediately following our first public hearing, and that is for a new petition um, to open a charter. And we also later on in our agenda have an action item for a final vote on Public Safety Academy. So, um, you're going to see a lot of me this evening, and I'll try to be quick and, um, expedient with my information. So our first item is a renewal on a public hearing for Entrepreneur High School of San Bernardino. This item is to provide for a public hearing on the charter petition for the requested renewal of the Entrepreneur High School of San Bernardino charter. Entrepreneur High School has submitted its request on October tenth of twenty twenty four. The process for consideration and action on a renewal charter request consists of the following. One, the charter school submitting, uh, a charter renewal petition. Two, the district board holding a public hearing on the provisions of the renewal charter, at which, at which time the board will consider the level of support for the renewal by the district teachers, other district employees, and parents. Three, district staff will analyze the renewal request against the standards for renewal set forth in the Charter Schools Act. Four, district staff will publish its recommendations, including, uh, recommended findings at least fifteen days before the meeting at which the district board will act on the request. The district board will take action on the renewal request at a future date. At the meeting at which the district board acts on the request, the charter petitioner will be provided equivalent time and procedures to present evidence and testimony to respond to staff recommendations and findings. During tonight's public hearing, the charter petitioner and the public have the opportunity to express their comments concerning the proposed charter school renewal. The district board may ask questions of the district administration and charter representatives, but no action will be taken during the public hearing. Charter renewals are governed by the standards and criteria for new charters and must update their charters to include a reasonably comprehensive description of any new laws since the charter was last approved or renewed. Also, as an additional criterion for renewal, charter schools are divided into high, middle, middle and low-performing categories. Or as a dashboard alternative status school based on their performance on the state dashboard. The standards for renewal and the length of the renewal term are determined based on the school's performance category. Entrepreneur High School of San Bernardino has been designated on the California Department of Education's list as a middle-performing uh, school for purposes of this renewal. So they may be renewed for a five-year term. As a middle-performing school, the district board is required to consider Entrepreneur High School of San Bernardino's school-wide performance on the state indicators of the dashboard, as well as its performance on local indicators. Greater weight must be given to the school's performance on academic indicators. The board must also consider clear and convincing evidence demonstrated by verified data showing either, one, the school achieved measurable increases in academic achievement defined by at least one year's progress for each year in school, or, two, the school has achieved strong post-secondary outcomes as defined by college enrollment, persistence, and completion rates equal to similar peers. However, the, the board may deny a middle-performing tier school on the basis of this uh, academic performance criterion only if it makes written factual findings, setting forth specific supporting facts that, one, the school failed to meet or make sufficient progress towards meeting standards that provide a benefit to the pupils at the school, two, that closure is in the best interest of the pupils, and, three, the decision to deny provides greater weight to performance on academic measures. District staff will include these considerations in its analysis and recommendations on the renewal request. Since the Entrepreneur High School of San Bernardino submitted its renewal petition, it has been working cooperatively with the district, consistent with our longstanding partnership. The board's action on this renewal is anticipated to be at its meeting of February second, twenty twenty four. It is therefore recommended that the Board of Education hold a required public hearing regarding Entrepreneur High School of San Bernardino's renewal petition tonight. That's a lot. And so now I'd like to introduce, um, Entrepreneur High School's, uh, chief, uh, petitioner, Randall Josarand, and the staff at Entrepreneur High School, as well as any community members that they have in a group packet that was submitted. and the staff at Entrepreneur High School, as well as any community members that they have in a group packet that was submitted.
Welcome, thank you, board, thank you, board president, superintendent. My name is Ray Culberson, and I'm one of the founders of Entrepreneur High School in the, in the early days and today. So we would just like to say that Entrepreneur High School, our, our, our number one vision is to try to get kids to start thinking outside the box, to be creative, to make sure that they can excel at anything they do. So ours is a thinking process. We want them to be able to open businesses and grow as individuals and the like. You're gonna hear data tonight, and I just wanna also say, everybody from Real Journey Academies, this is our, this is part of our team here. All these guys have a stake in what we do, and then we have kids that are here too. So we want you to hear our petition, and we look forward to any constructive comments or criticisms or just praise if you want. And I'd just like to say one particular thing that's most important to the superintendent and Danny Tillman. This is not a suit from the Ragman, but it is, and the Ragman was an entrepreneur, but it is an entrepreneurial spirit that we bring here tonight. So I just wanna introduce Randall Josarand and let you know, again, this is not a Ragman suit. It's just the spirit of the Ragman.
Good evening. Let me get this a little bit higher. So as he said, I'm Randall Josarand, I'm the lead petitioner for Entrepreneur High School and our charter renewal. We have given you an updated summary with regard to data. When we originally submitted the renewal petition, the data for the previous year was not available. But the dashboard has since been published, and we've given you an update that includes that updated data from this past year. It's important to understand that Entrepreneur High School is unique, and it is uniquely designed to really work with students who are predominantly underserved and at risk for academic failure. In fact, eight out of ten students from high school who transfer into Entrepreneur High School are credit deficient. Many at least a semester or more credit deficient. We also have students that come in predominantly with test scores that are below grade level. So we are working with a student population that by the definition would be termed as at-risk. We really have developed a school that is unique. I've worked in schools all over the country. And this is absolutely the most unique learning environment I've ever been a part of. We really emphasize experiential learning. It's not just the students in class, but it's taking that knowledge, and you'll get a chance to hear from the students in a little bit about how they've utilized that. Despite the at-risk nature of our student population, our four-year graduation rate of eighty-nine point five percent exceeds the state average. That was also true with our graduation rate in two thousand and twenty-three at eighty-five point five percent. We've also scored at the highest level on the California School Dashboard with regard to the College and Career Readiness Indicator in both twenty twenty-three, when the indicator was a new indicator, and twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-four, just this past year, seventy-one point four percent of EHS students reached this important college and career readiness benchmark. That compares to forty-five point three percent across the state of California. And this is a benchmark based on what goes into the calculation for this score, we think is an excellent reflection of the program at E-Hi. Similarly, our A to G completion rate, seventy-four point eight percent on the last report in twenty twenty-three compared to the state average of forty-four point five percent. English Language Arts has been an area where we've scored consistently, but just below the state average. We also have our locally normed, or our local nationally normed assessment, the NWA MAP. On that assessment consistently over the years, we have shown that our students' growth was over the fiftieth percentile, meaning that we're achieving a year's growth or more than a year's growth for a year in school, and we've done that very consistently across the board. We absolutely have some areas for continued efforts. Math is one of those areas. And that indicator for us has moved up incrementally, but it's still much too low. We also have put in place a really detailed research-based strategy this year to address math. It's very comprehensive, and that's included as an appendix in the petition itself. Also, our suspension rate is at a level that really isn't where we want it to be. And you'll see in the petition itself, we've completely rewritten and reworked element ten. And based on that and the interventions that we've put in place this year, so far in the first semester and compared, in comparison to the last two years, we've had some really encouraging data. Entrepreneur High School does meet the criteria for renewal as a middle performing school. We're really excited about what is happening, and I can't wait for you to hear from some of our kids. Before we do that, I'd like you to hear from our CEO, Alex Lacer.
Good evening, board members, President Zabaos, and Superintendent Oriano. Eight years ago, we started this journey with you and launched Entrepreneur High School in as a true partnership with SPCUSD to create a school that truly embodies the entrepreneurial spirit and mindsets, and creating entrepreneurs for the workforce and college. Our founding executive director, Ray Culberson, and principal, Michael Padilla, took on the challenge of developing entrepreneurs to impact the Atlanta Empire, remembering that some of the most important relevant businesses started in the Atlanta Empire, such as McDonald's, State of Brothers, Bakers, Del Taco, and many more. These past several years, just like any startups, we've had challenges. We've had successes, we've had some ups and downs, some failures, and we continue to move forward as entrepreneurs, just like any other business. This was done with the support and continues to be done with the support of organizations such as Cal State San Bernardino, Valley Community College, University of Redlands, local chambers, local businesses, SPCSS, and most importantly, the support that we have with SPCS USD. Together, we will continue to develop entrepreneurs in the region. Thank you, and just want to introduce Dr. Rose Bumentry.
Good evening. I'm, I would like to share with you that we're not only looking at academics and our entrepreneurial mindset, but we're also looking at the well-being of our students. And we're working very closely with our community-based organizations to bring school-based health on campus. We've partnered with many of our community-based organizations. For example, this year alone in August with our Vision Care, we were able to give out one hundred and fifty-nine eyeglasses to our students at Entrepreneur High School, San Bernardino. In January, we are gonna be bringing a dental clinic unit on campus, and we're just constantly looking for our partners within the, within the community to help us with the whole child. And so we're just really excited about that, and I'm, I'm happy to be back in San Bernardino, and I'm, I'm really enjoying my time with Entrepreneur High and Real Journey Academies. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and board president and superintendent Oriano. My name is Michael Padilla, and I'm the executive director of learning and program development for Entrepreneur High School. I'm responsible for the continuous development of the entrepreneur model and innovation, the E-model, which really makes at its core is what really makes our school unique. It's unique because of the way we blend entrepreneurship, academics, and mindset development in a single cohesive approach. It's not just a program, it's a framework designed to equip students with entrepreneurial mindset and professional skills to succeed in a career or any path that they choose after high school. For example, in our culinary program, our kids don't just learn how to cook. We develop their mindset so that they can be an executive chef one day or start a future business in the culinary industry. The same approach applies to all our pathways across the school. We don't just provide them with the technical skills, but the mindset to elevate those skills so they can create their own opportunities in any way they see. What truly sets the E-model apart is that we intentionally build our students' entrepreneurial mindset or the E-mindset. Our core courses integrate entrepreneurial thinking. We teach students to think critically, solve problems, and take ownership of their learning. This approach blends our academics with real-world challenges that help students build confidence and adaptability that they will need to be successful. We know that fostering the entrepreneurial mindset and developing that with our students, we know how powerful that is and what benefits that will provide them. It will give them the opportunity to be successful in an ever-changing, unpredictable future. At Entrepreneur High School, we have students with different backgrounds, different experiences, and different skill sets, and we welcome them all. We also have students who come to us from other campuses, other schools, and have different starting points. We welcome that because we know through our entrepreneurial mindset and our development, we will provide those students with the tools, the skills, and the opportunities to be successful. We also meet kids where they're at, and we know with the mindset we can give them, we can empower them to grow and excel. We also foster the mindset development with some of our newer initiatives, which is the E-Executive Program. It's a leadership initiative that we provide students with workshops on campus in team building, leadership, and communication. And these students are the ones who spread the entrepreneurial spirit and the entrepreneurial mindset to their peers on campus, creating a culture of growth and innovation. We also provide on-campus internships where students run student-run enterprises in the print shop or in the student store, or they also cater to outside events. So that also provides them with a business operations and that real-world experience that they don't get in the classroom. We also, through our Business Incubator Program, students not only have the theory part in their classes, but they also have the real-world business application and create businesses, whether it's a service or product, and they have an opportunity to sell those at our business expos or through outside community events. To measure this progress, we developed our entrepreneurial mindset exams. This allows us to track entrepreneurial growth and to see if our instructional strategies are meeting the needs of our standards of our students. This year, our freshmen took the exam for the first time, and at the beginning of the school year, they took the exam and they averaged a twenty-nine percent, letting us know that they had some manageable knowledge, but not fully there. We just recently took our mid-year entrepreneurial mindset exams and students averaged a fifty-four percent, letting us know that there was growth and that what we are doing as a school is working. Developing the E-mindset is a passion of mine. This is something I've done throughout my career, most notably at the Patino School of Entrepreneurship in Fresno, California, where I've worked with students one-on-one to really develop their mindsets to broaden with skills and opportunities that they would not have otherwise. How powerful could it be if we are able to develop our mindsets, our students' mindsets, and provide them with the skills to navigate through an uncertain and unpredictable future? That we know any challenges that they will face, they'll be able to navigate them through them because we gave them the skills and the ability to do that. You'll hear from some of our students tonight who faced some challenges, but with an E-mindset, they've been able to navigate through them. Our students have also created some items, some swag that they would like to present, that we made in our print shops, they designed themselves. We even have one of our student businesses t-shirts within that as well, and they'll talk about their business. Thank you. Now you hear from some of our students, Ian Castillo and Gan Marino.
Good evening, board members and board president. My name is Ian Castillo. I am a senior at Entrepreneur High School. Before I came to Entrepreneur, I, I had a struggle to see my future, a future for myself. But with the support from teachers and staff and coaches, I've been able to, to turn my challenges, challenges into achievements and find a real sense of purpose. One of my proudest achievements has been starting my own, my, my own business, Make It Out. Make It Out is more than just a business. It's a symbol of hope and a reminder that you have the ability to create something meaningful and impactful. Entrepreneur High School has inspired me to take this step by teaching me to believe myself and my potential through real-world skills and encouragement. Entrepreneur High School has shown me that anything is possible with the right support and mindset. I'm thankful for the opportunity I've had here and for the people who believed in me. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, board members and board president. My name is Gan Marino. I am a senior at Entrepreneur High School. I started here as a freshman, but life took me on a different direction. When I returned, I realized just how special this school is and how much I needed the opportunities it had to offer. Being back has been life-changing. I've been looking, I've been working on a business alongside Ian Castillo, and it has given me a sense of purpose and hope for my future. It's also shown me that no matter where you start, you can achieve something great with the right support. Entrepreneur High School isn't just a school. It's a place where second chances and fresh starts are possible for everyone who walks through its doors. I am proud to be a part of this school, and I am way more than excited to see where my lessons that I have learned there will take me in my future. Thank you for allowing me to show my journey.
Good evening, board members and board president. My name is Liti Vasquez, and I am a senior at Entrepreneur High School. I faced challenges in my life that at one point felt overwhelming, but this school gave me tools and support I needed to not only overcome them, but to grow stronger and more confident. The way Entrepreneur High School teaches us to think differently through the E-mindset is something you don't find everywhere. It is more than academics. It's about finding solutions, staying focused, and turning obstacles into opportunities. The teachers, counselors, and staff at our school don't just teach, they care. They've helped me feel seen, heard, and supported, which has made all the difference in my life. Entrepreneur High School is a community where every student is given a chance to thrive and grow. I am grateful to be a part of a school that has helped me become the person I am today. Thank you for listening to my story.
Good evening, board members and board president. My name is Maida Martinez, and I am a senior at Entrepreneur High School. Throughout my time at E-Hi, one of the biggest things I've gained are my leadership skills. With the E-Executive Program and workshops offered, I've grown in ways that I never thought to be possible, both as a student and as a person. During my freshman year, I was not at all confident in my skills and my abilities, but to the opportunities that our school offers, like its internship and leadership training, I am now prepared for life beyond high school. I have learned how to manage teams, present confidently, and set goals that I know I can achieve. These aren't just school skills, but they're life skills that will help guide me for the years to come. Entrepreneur High School has taught me to dream big and to work hard to achieve those dreams. I'm proud to call this school my home and to represent everything that it stands for. Thank you so much for letting me share my experience.
Good evening, board members and board presidents. My name is Javi Allen. I'm a senior at Entrepreneur High School. And at one time, I was gonna drop out of high school because school was difficult and I didn't know what I was gonna do with my life. But coming to Entrepreneur High School has changed me in ways I never expected. With my support from my teachers and the E-mindset program, I have grown as a person and as a student. I was awarded Entrepreneur of the Month last month and achievements that and achievements that still motivate me today. Every day I do Uber from Marina Valley to San Bernardino so I could be a part of the opportunities that they give us students, and I wouldn't trade it for nothing. This school has made a, a big impact on my life. And I'm excited to be, I'm excited for the opportunities that they allow ahead for us because of the foundation I built here. Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to share my story.
Good evening, board members, presidents, and superintendents. My name is Serenity Satterfield. My name is Serenity Satterfield, and I'm a current junior at Entrepreneur High School. And as I stand up here on the podium, I am overwhelmed with the sense of pride as this school has supported me in so many ways that I'm attempting to put into words. Coming into Entrepreneur High School, I did have a sibling going here, but he didn't really describe to me his experiences on how the school was. Entrepreneur was newly developed. The school had only been developed, I would say, for three, four years as I joined as a freshman. And as a student, I was very passionate about education. I was very passionate about leadership development, and I was excited for different opportunities. And I came in unsure if Entrepreneur High School would be able to provide me with those opportunities. Little did I know. Little did I know all that was in store for me when I came to this school. Not only have they supported us academically in terms of workplace development, but also in personal life, too. Entrepreneur is more than just a school. It's a community. It's a family here. There are so many opportunities that I not only have had, but my peers have had as well in school and outside of school. As I stand up proudly here with my red blazer, I wouldn't have been able to be here today representing Skills USA as our Region Six Vice President if it wasn't for Entrepreneur and the amazing community that we have. The people back there are a testament to just how great and just how supportive they are, not just in terms of, like I said before, academics, but a focus on the students as well. We are a small school, but the quality of education, the quality of life that they provide is unmatched. It's unmatched. I've not only been able to grow in the skill set that I brought into Entrepreneur High School, but they've allowed me to grow different skills that I, it's just unfathomable. Being able to be here as a Vice President, but also being able to be the first in different aspects, being the first to run for the position, being the first freshman to ever be on our television production, that's happened because of the support that I've had at this school, that one-on-one connection that they provide. If one person isn't able to provide help at the time, another person will, and that's just how tight-knit the community here is at Entrepreneur High School. And as I stand here with my heart full and with passion in my heart, I am so proud to be a Panther as I stand on this podium today. And I want to thank you guys for your time, and thank you to Entrepreneur High School for all the opportunities you guys have provided me and the one-on-one support. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
The only thing I say, you better watch out. The team's coming. They're coming for your jobs. They're coming there for the future leaders. A lot of times, I come up and I, you know, I just make little jokes and different things like that, but this is one of the times where passion is really the most important. Throughout my career, all I cared about was kids. I had a superintendent ask me one time, and maybe he didn't understand, he said, "What's your, what's your goal? What's your personal goal?" I said, "To help every kid that comes through the door." No, what's your personal goal? Do I want to be superintendent? Do I want to be? No. I want to help every kid that I come in contact with, every kid that comes through the door. Entrepreneur High gives us that opportunity. We have kids that have come from crazy circumstances. Welcome, open the door. We have kids that have challenges in many different ways. Welcome, open the door. We take on the challenges that are greater than sometimes the district can handle, and we have to work through that because we have to build a mindset. But with everything that we do, it's all designed to try to get to the end result of helping kids get to the next level. There are some of us on this board right now who have had challenges beyond any kind of measure that had to get to a certain spot. We have to give kids multiple choices to get to education, multiple charter schools, multiple programs inside the district. We got to find different pathways. We have to always be creative. So my whole point in saying this is that, you see, this is a combination of kids that have come from multiple levels that have done things. It's just not my work. We still have a lot to grow on, and the staff can tell you, "I'm challenging them all the time." We're challenging them all the time. So we just want to say thank you very much. Remember where we are. Remember the story of the ragman, because the ragman's story is where we all became entrepreneurs, watching somebody sell something out the back of a truck, making it happen. And to this day, we remember that ragman, and that's what we want these guys to do, to have their businesses and all of that. I became a millionaire in this city, but I never have forgotten every kid, every day. I don't walk with my head in the sky. I walk to be able to help each one of these kids. So thank you very much, and that's our presentation. We appreciate it so much. And our kids from college, they always say this, and you can talk to them, the one skill they have is their ability to problem-solve at multiple levels. They're going to be great business people, great leaders, and they're going to make choices that will radically change the district and change everything that we believe in and the growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, if there aren't any questions for the school or for charter school operations, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. The board will now vote on the renewal petition at this time.
Thank you.
Seven point three. No. Seven point two. Public hearing regarding the charter petition for Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. On October 1st, 2024, Dr. Shanae Bowman, lead petitioner for Dr. Margaret Hill Academy, submitted a charter petition to the Charter School Operations Department. A public hearing will be held to consider the level of support for the charter petition. It is appropriate at this time to conduct a public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening once more. I'd like to introduce tonight, we have a new petition, a public hearing for a new petition. Dr. Margaret Hill Academy submitted its request on October 1st of 2024. The process for consideration and action on a charter request consists of the following. One, the charter school submits a charter petition to the charter board. The district board holds a public hearing on the provisions, at which time the board will consider the level of support for the new charter by district teachers, other district employees, and parents. Three, district staff will analyze the petition request against standards for new charters set forth in the Charter Schools Act. Four, district staff will publish its recommendations, including recommended findings, at least 15 days before the meeting at which the district board will act on the request. The district board will take action on the renewal request. At the meeting at which the district board acts on the request, the charter petitioner will be provided equivalent time and procedures to present evidence and testimony to respond to the staff recommendations and findings. During tonight's public hearing, the charter petitioner and the public have the opportunity to express their comments concerning the proposed charter school. The district board may ask questions of the district administration and charter representatives, but no action will be taken during the public hearing tonight. The board's action on this petition is anticipated to be at its meeting of January 14th of 2025. It is therefore recommended that the Board of Education hold a required public hearing regarding Dr. Margaret Hill Academy petition tonight.
Just as a reminder, you have a total of 30 minutes, and I will say time at every five. Thank you.
Who should I look at when I say next slide? Over there? Okay. Good evening, distinguished Board members. I am the very proud lead petitioner for Dr. Margaret Hill Academy, and how fitting for that to be on her actual birthday. For the next few minutes, I would like to share with you how this school will be uniquely positioned to be a transformative partner for San Bernardino schools, to elevate the educational experience of students, especially those with the most need. Next slide, please. Previous slide, please. First, I think it's important to share the relationship with Dr. Hill and why this school is named after her. Dr. Hill was an advisor, she was a mentor, and she was a friend, but she also was one of my first examples of what it means to be a catalyst for change. I worked at King Middle School, and she approached the principal and I, and she asked us a very simple but profound question. She said, "The 600 kids on this campus, do they know who Dr. King was, the name of the school that they attend, and what life he lived?" And honestly, we could not confidently answer that question. And so her question sparked a movement that became the Day of King, and that Day of King was a celebration of his life and his legacy, a district-wide writing competition, and a chance to amplify the voices of students. And so that's who she was, someone who asked the thought-provoking questions, had a heart of service and advocacy for students. So to honor her legacy, it seemed just so fitting to name a school after her. Next slide, please. So I also think it's important for you to know my background. I started my journey in education here in San Bernardino City Schools for almost a decade. And in that decade, that laid the foundation for me to become a leader promoted to being a site, district, and county administrator. And I currently serve as the Deputy Superintendent for Upland Unified School District. I've spent over 20 years disrupting educational inequities in education, and I'm very proud to share that in Upland Unified School District, we have some of the highest graduation rates in the entire county, we have some of the highest A-through-G completion rates, and we have the highest in the entire county English language learner performance. And I believe that's attributed to the leadership that I've had with a team that's dedicated to disrupting those patterns. Next slide, please. What you wouldn't know about me from the petition is that I do come from humble beginnings. I am a product of the foster care system. My parents were teenagers when they had me, and they were both incarcerated by the time I was 10 years of age. That led me to attending seven different high schools, seven different foster homes, six different high schools, and it was my senior year of high school that I realized that education could be a pathway to success different from my childhood upbringing. And that led me to leading a life that included graduating from high school and being first-gen, also included getting married and having three children, who all attended schools here in San Bernardino City for elementary and junior high. And what I learned as a mother is that you can birth multiple children, but they all have different needs, just like the classroom. Our students in our classrooms, that range from 25 to 40 students, all have different needs, and so this school was designed with that in mind. Every kid, students with IEPs because of disabilities, have individual plans, but students who are gifted, students who are homeless and foster and are just having a tough time also need an individual plan. So every student at Margaret Hill Academy will have an individual and personalized plan for their future. Next slide, please. Recent data released for our county reveals the urgent need for change and innovative options. We have 30% of our students in our county that are chronically absent, 70% who are not reading at grade level, 80% who cannot do math at grade level. And while our county has almost 90% of students who graduate from high school, less than half of those students are graduating prepared to attend four-year universities. And so while we are doing our best in the traditional system, it's not enough for all kids. Next slide, please. The needs and the data, my educational background, my experiences all birth the vision for Margaret Hill Academy. And that vision is really simple. We want to ignite transformation through high-quality education, and we want to do that through three pillars. We want to equip, engage, and empower students to be great. And what we define greatness as is that every student will have a spirit of generosity in their heart, where they feel like they want to give back to their community, like the students who are sitting on this board, students who are responsible and take responsibility for their actions, that have empathy and are willing to walk in the shoes of others, that know how to be authentically themselves and unapologetic about it, and also have tenacity so that they can be resilient in the face of their challenges. We will inspire every student to be great at Margaret Hill Academy. Next slide, please. What that looks like for each pillar, some major highlights. It will be a wraparound services school because oftentimes they're trying to meet the basic needs of students, but a student in crisis usually comes from a family in crisis. So we're going to build systems of support for families on campus. We also are going to engage in project-based learning using USC's Challenge-Based Reflective Learning Framework. One of the first challenges our students at Margaret Hill will take on is the fact that there's not one bookstore in the entire city of San Bernardino where you can buy books. So they will research that, they will write about it, they will write to their congressman, and they will help the city have a bookstore because our students in this community deserve to have a place they can go and read and buy books.
Hi.
That was 10 minutes?
That was five.
I was told I had 10 for the presentation.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All right. We also talk about we want to prepare students for the world, but we don't take them to see the world. So every student at Margaret Hill Academy will actually have the opportunity at least one time to travel internationally. We also, in San Bernardino City Schools, have this amazing middle, college, high school program that you all offer, but you turn away 200 kids each year from participating. So we will be an extension of your dual enrollment program because all 350 of our students will be accessing dual enrollment, and they'll finish their first college course before they get to ninth grade. Margaret Hill's success will be this community's success. Next slide, please. Quickly, on a daily basis, what does that look like? That looks like four days a week, students will be in block schedule so that they have extended time for those projects. They'll start every single morning in a homeroom where they're, we're implementing the Ron Clark Academy house system so they can feel a sense of community. They'll also have one period called their pathway period for when time, what I need time. So those personalized plans with those goals and those supports, there'll be an actual period in their day for their needs to be met. And when the school day ends at 3:30, we'll still offer two additional hours of after-school programming for students based on their needs and their interests. Next slide, please. So if you say yes to Margaret Hill Academy, we'll have one school of 350 students, starting with sixth and seventh grade and adding a grade each year, small classes of 25 to 1, counseling ratio of 100 to 1 instead of the 3 to 400 in the current system, and 40 new jobs for the community. It is every child's civil right to have an exceptional educational experience, and this is an option that will give them that. Next slide. I wanted to end with a couple of things. First, this is a picture of Kareem Abdul-Jabbar, and he has Wooden coaching him at UCLA. And then later in life, we have Kareem walking Wooden on an NBA court. This picture greatly describes why I'm here, investment and reciprocity. When we invest in the youth, the return on investment is unmeasurable. And I have about 10 to 15 years in me, and I want to give it back to this community that gave so much to me when I started my career. Last slide, please. Next slide. I'm not doing this work alone. You see a bit of my village here. If my village will please stand, everybody that's here to support Margaret Hill Academy. So the promise that I make to you, if you say yes to Margaret Hill Academy, is that we're going to ensure a safe, inclusive, and nurturing environment for every student. We're going to foster academic excellence. We're going to build strong partnerships with families in the community. We'll be transparent in all of our decision-making. We will hold students and inspire them to reach their highest potential, and we will lead with unity, integrity, and a Margaret Hill heart of service. Thank you.
I guess just point of clarification, is there, and you know, maybe my fellow school board members can shed some light, I thought it was 30 minutes, all-inclusive. Okay, so we have 20 remaining? Okay, yeah, so whoever you want to call up.
So we have 21, 31 more minutes, and I will call Paul up first.
Good evening. Board President Cabalas, Board members, and Superintendent Ariano. My name is Paul Thies. I'm attorney with the law firm of Young, Mini, and Core. We represent most charter schools in California, and I am so proud to be here tonight to support the proposed charter for the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. Our office has reviewed the charter petition, and we have found that it meets all legal requirements. The charter presents a sound educational program. The petitioners are demonstrably likely to successfully implement the program. The signature requirement has been met. The charter contains all legally required affirmations. The charter contains a reasonably comprehensive description of all required elements. The charter declares the public school employer. The charter school is demonstrably likely to serve the interests of the entire community in which it plans to locate. I mean, you've seen the turnout tonight. You've seen the t-shirts. And the district does not have a qualified or negative interim certification. That means the legislative intent for charter schools, that they are an integral part of the California educational system and that their establishment should be encouraged, is the guiding legal requirement, and the default approval standard is in effect. We will work closely with petitioners to answer any board or district staff questions in the advance of the decision meeting next month. Thank you all for your time.
Dr. Beck?
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Mr. Ariano, Superintendent, members of the board, and community members. My name is Carmen Beck, and I know many of you. I've been part of the San Bernardino family for many years now. I spent 22 years of my career in San Bernardino and 10 amazing years here in San Bernardino City, where I was able to lead in a couple different schools. And I just, I'm here in support of Margaret Hill Academy, and I come to you, starting with immigrant experience. I didn't become an educator until later in life after I was a mom. I had already three kids, and I fell into an education career which I never imagined, but it ended up transforming my life as well as that of my future. But it ended up transforming my life, as well as that of my family. And then I went on to serve from bilingual aide, so that was my first assignment, all the way to chief academic officer. And I'm here to tell you that this school is going to be a place that is not just for students, but for their whole family. Because we understand what education does. It affects the whole entire family. And there are three things I could tell you about the school that are very important to me. For me, education has been my occupation, and it continues to be. I serve currently as an assistant professor at Cal State San Bernardino. So I am in a program that develops the future leaders of our area, right, or beyond. And, um, the areas are these, teachers. First of all, we're going to have teachers that also share in that occupation. They're there for their students, and they're there to look at their own practices and continually improve them, so they can meet the needs of the students. Number two, the students themselves. They're going to be able to have a voice, they're going to be taken care of, and they're going to be seen through their strengths. That is, to me, the most important thing. We're not going to look at them for what they don't or can't. We're going to see them for what they can do and what they bring to the table, and we are going to then help them grow based on that. And finally, the parents and the community members. Because it's going to provide wraparound services, we believe that this is going to affect not just those students, but their whole families. So I'm here to say I am committed to this project fully, but also, as a member of Cal State San Bernardino, I am hoping that our relationship with the school also will be strong in the future. So thank you so much.
Jessica Tavallassi?
Good evening, members of the board and panel. My name is Jessica, and this is my husband Ted. Uh, we are proud parents of three amazing boys, one of which graduated from San Andreas High School last year, and two of which are still in elementary school here in San Bernardino. Um, one of my biggest concern has always been about their future education, especially as they transition into middle and high schools. My sons are very bright and curious, and they deserve to be in a school that recognizes and nurtures their potential. Currently, one of my boys is part of a magnet program at Kimbark Elementary, but it's limited to the elementary level. Looking ahead, the options for continuing in such enriching environments are limited, especially with the competitive lottery systems in place for good programs at the junior and high school levels. This is where Dr. Margaret Hill Academy comes into the picture. The academy promises engaging, engaging learning experiences, project-based activities, individualized support, and opportunities for dual enrollment. These are exactly the kinds of educational opportunities that I want for my sons and can make a difference in a child's life. Approving Dr. Margaret Hill Academy means I won't have to hope and scramble for my sons to get into good programs. They will have assured access to an educational path that meets their needs right here in our community. It means they and many kids like them will have a future where their potential can be fully realized without the barriers that currently exist. So I stand before you today with my family to express my wholehearted support for the approval of Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. Please say yes to a school that promises to equip, engage, and empower all children. Our community needs this, and our children deserve it. Thank you for considering my request and for all that you do for our community's education.
Jessica Alomada?
Good evening, San Bernardino City Unified School District Board members, presidents, superintendents. My name is Jessica Alomada, and I serve students in San Bernardino County, first locally here in the city and currently in Upland under the leadership of Dr. Bowman. And I'm transitioning now to Redlands. I'm a school counselor and a church leader, and I'm here to support Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. And I pray that you will see the benefits and vision of the school and make the right decision, which is to prove an opportunity for a student equity-focused environment that will nurture success, provide early access to post-secondary education, and create resilient leaders. I believe the board should say yes, because we know that students who have the right guidance and exposure, as well as the right culture cultivated for them, will be most likely to succeed and pursue higher education path with higher levels of success. While at Upland High School, I was part of Dr. Bowman's vision in supporting the construction of U College Academy Program, which is composed of seventy percent economically disadvantaged, first-gen, EL, McKenney-Vento, foster, and SPED students. This program has demonstrated that any student could achieve their educational goals. We learned that with high rigor and high levels of support, there's an outcome of high success. We learned also in which students will be completing thirty-two to ninety college units by senior year during the school day on a comprehensive high school setting, not separated. Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will allow, as promised, students to have the same access to higher ed while being prepared for future success. Another piece that will promise higher success is their sense of belonging. Our U College Academy Program was based on a cohort model within the comprehensive high school of Upland of nearly three thousand students. They got one period a day to work on college credit courses with their U College program peers. The program focused on creating a sense of community with various activities and intentional classroom seating and arrangement, in which we see the fostering of peer leadership and community within diverse groups of students. Through this, we have seen an increase in peer-to-peer support and ability to stay motivated and reach their goals together. We have seen success socially, emotionally, academically, and with post-secondary access through this program. I am certain that this will be expanded through the vision becoming an action at Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. Thank you for considering my comments and testimony. I respectfully ask that you approve Dr. Margaret Hill Academy's charter petition as our students, including my very own son, and the future generations deserve this phenomenal and well-equipped education opportunity. I know as a first-gen student that went through homelessness as a teen, this would have drastically impacted me, and therefore I hope that we can provide it to those that need access. Our community, diverse group of students, should have a chance to great education that includes a construction of great character with the right guidance. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Brooklyn, on behalf of Jasmine Espino?
Good evening, members of the board, and happy holidays. My name is Brooklyn, and I am speaking on behalf of Jasmine Espino, a senior at Sanji. She cannot be here tonight and asked me to speak on her behalf. As one of the youngest voices in this room, I stand not only as a student, but as a representative of every young person who walks through the doors of this school district. Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will give students the tools they need to be, to succeed academically in ways traditional schools often cannot. For example, the school's project-based learning approach allows students to apply what they learn in real-world settings, making their education engaging and relevant. Imagine a class where students not only read about science and conduct, but conduct experiments to solve real-world problems in their community, or where they don't just study history, but get to experience it by traveling internationally. I compare education to a fresh coat of paint. Simple, surface level change. But as we all know, painting over cracks doesn't make the structure stronger. It's the foundation that determines whether a building can stand the test of time. This, this is same, this is true for our schools. I compare edu, oh, sorry. The initiative isn't just a proposal, it's a lifeline for students for future, who deserve every opportunity to succeed. Our future rests on them, so why not give the best foundation we possibly can? But here's the truth. Students today aren't motivated by traditional classes. Classes don't ignite their passions or prepare them for challenges ahead. What Dr. Bowman is proposing is bold and visionary. But education isn't just about academics. It's about creating well-rounded individuals who feel connected and supported. At Dr. Margaret Hill Academy, students will thrive personally as well. Programs like the house system give us a sense of belonging and community, turning the school into family. When students feel like they're a part of something bigger, they develop confidence in building lasting relationships. Margaret Hill Academy isn't just about repainting a school. It's about rebuilding what schools from the inside out and the ground up, giving students the tools they need to grow, thrive, and lead. I urge you to say yes to Dr. Margaret Hill Academy, not only for me, because I'm a senior and it's too late for me to have this experience, but for future students like me. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
Good evening. My name is Tommy Brooks. I'm a LA County probation officer. Uh, my thirty years as a probation officer, I've been in and out of all kinds of schools throughout my career. Uh, from Los Angeles to Upland to Chafee Joint Unified School District and so on. Uh, as you have seen and witnessed, Dr. Bowman is on top of her game. She knows what she's doing, and, and, and most of all, as all of us individuals who work with kids know, it's connecting with kids. And as you know, as educators, when you have a passion, it's not a job, it's who you are. And I believe in her, and I also tip my hat to this district in its flexibility and its way, in ways that you guys think outside the box in order to educate all your kids from all economic levels and backgrounds. And I know, and I have full confidence, and I urge you guys to vote yes when it comes to voting for this school and Dr. Bowman's vision and journey. Thank you.
Dr. Kennedy?
Good evening, Superintendent Ariano, President Caballos, and members of the board. My name is Lynn Kennedy, and I am a member of the board for the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. And tis the season, the season for celebration, joy, and family. But children will tell you, this is the season for gifts. There is nothing more exciting and heartwarming than seeing a child open a gift. Tonight, I want to talk to you about a gift that transcends any season, that is transformational, that has the potential to truly change lives. And that is the gift of hope. Hope that stems from access and opportunity. And the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy gives students that hope, the access of a strong instructional program, relevant and rigorous curriculum that is rooted in real-life application, an environment that creates a culture of success with wraparound services that promote academic success as well as emotional and social well-being. That is the access that they need. And that access is the gateway to opportunity. And the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will give every student the opportunity to leave school and be equipped to be college and career-ready. I am advocating for this charter school from two positions. First, as an educator, a lifelong educator. Thirty years as an administrator, retiring as a superintendent. I have seen the very best of public schools, the best teachers, the best administrators, and the best school resource staff. But I've also seen gaps. Gaps that have become barriers, that not every student can be or has been successful in our public schools. The Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will fill that gap and stand in the place to provide those students with that access and opportunity to meet their full potential. The second position is as an elected official. As the mayor pro tem for the city of Rancho Cucamonga, it is vital that we have residents who are prepared to be contributing members of their community, where they can work, where they can live, where they can invest in the communities that they live in, so that they can serve, and that will improve and create the vibrancy that we need for our cities. So I thank you as board members and what you do every single day to make those decisions that will impact our students for life. So I'm asking that you support the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy to produce the students and the future that we need. Thank you.
Mr. George Rounds?
Hello, board members. Um, Dr. Shanae Bowman, the lead petitioner for Margaret Hill Academy, is my daughter. Her journey represents a profound transformation and hope for those often overlooked by the system. In nineteen eighty-one, at just two years old, she witnessed my incarceration, a life sentence imposed on an eighteen-year-old due to systematic failures that devalued my potential. Despite my background of poverty and adversity, I proved the system wrong by growing, changing, and becoming the father my daughter deserved. This, um, today, many children face similar struggles of poverty, trauma, and neglect. These children need a school like Margaret Hill Academy, a place that recognizes their worth and empowers them to succeed. I urge you to approve this charter school, not just for the children of San Bernardino, but for the entire community. Let Margaret Hill Academy serve as a beacon of hope and opportunity so I mean that many need, and I thank you all for that.
I lied, there's one more speaker, and she's phenomenal. My first year teaching in San Bernardino City Schools, Desiree Williams.
Alright. Hello, members of the board. My name is Desiree Williams. I'm a native of San Bernardino County, and I proudly serve as a resident sub at Deville Hosten Academy. I'm here today to ask that you, you vote yes to approve the Dr. Margaret Hill Academy charter petition. As we know, this school is named after one of San Bernardino's greatest pioneers, Dr. Margaret Hill. Dr. Margaret Hill was the mother of our community and an advocate for youth. She was trusted and would even go as far as picking children up from their homes to make sure they got to school on time. She worked on the school board and even created a moms group to cheer the kids on while encouraging them to remain in school. She understood that the children are our future and equipped, engaged, and empowered them to the best of her abilities. This was one of Dr. Margaret Hill's missions, and this is the mission of Dr. Margaret Hill Academy. Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will continue to uphold the heart, passion, and action of Dr. Margaret Hill by providing students with opportunities for success. Some of the ways that this academy will provide such success is through project learning, access, access to college credits in high school, individualized learning plans that are catered according to the strengths and path of that student, community resources, and even access to trained therapists and counselors for mental, emotional, and academic support. Because community is extremely important to Dr. Margaret Hill, uh, uh, Academy. Um, fa, uh, excuse me. Dr. Marla, Margaret Hill Academy will have family leadership council meetings that will keep families updated with the current school events and provide families with a voice to express their concerns and or ideas regarding the school. With, with your yes, Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will strive to insu, ensure quality academic support to the youth of San Bernardino who deserve nothing less. I wanted to end with a few comments regarding Dr. Shanae Bowman, a woman who I respect and value. I was a former student of her first class at Shannon Hills Middle School, where she taught history and English. I remember her having consistent zeal and always challenging us to go deeper in our learning. She celebrated diversity in her class, giving us rich and honest insight regarding culture and why it is important to appreciate one another. Outside of the classroom, she created a step team, providing them with stylish apparel. This step team allowed children to have a positive outlet through artistic expression and the opportunity to experience the impact of unity and formation. One day, I decided to cheat and switch names on my homework assignment with someone who I thought had done better. Well, of course, she found out. She did not embarrass me, but she did have a talk with me that empowered me to walk in integrity. I did not leave her with my head, I did not leave her with my head down. I left encouraged to do my best. And yes, I said I did not leave, because she held me accountable by sending me to on-campus detention. Dr. Shanae Bowman is still very present and active in my life, as she is with several of her other students. She continues to provide wise counsel, resources, and other means of support as well. As we journey in our path, we, uh, as we journey in the path that we are called to take. With her leadership, Dr. Margaret Hill Academy will change students' lives and continue to cultivate hope through faith and work, and works for the youth of San Bernardino. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, board. I know our time is up. You have a gold folder. It has QR codes with, I think, some really cool four-minute videos that you might enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, board and cabinet, for the opportunity. Um, do you have any?
Do you have any additional questions for our Charter School Operations Office or the charter itself?
Looks like we don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven point three. Public hearing and adoption of memorandum of understanding wildfire evacuation leave between the California Schools, School Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District. The Board of Education will hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the memorandum of understanding wildfire evacuation leave between the California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District on October 23, 2024. The California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, CSEA, and the district agree to the memorandum of understanding MOU regarding wildfire evacuation leave on November 25, 2024. CSEA ratified the proposed tentative agreement. It is appropriate at this time to conduct a public hearing. Do we have any public comments? No comments. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the memorandum of understanding wildfire evacuation leave between the California Schools Employee Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District.
I'm moved.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Tillman and second by Ms. Medina.
Second.
President Zabaios? Did it pass? Yeah, it did. Aye. Motion passed. Seven point four. Public hearing and adoption of memorandum of understanding bilingual probationary period between the California Schools Employee Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District on October 23, 2024. The California Schools, School Employees Association, Chapter 183.
I'm moved.
Hold on. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. CSEA and the district agree to the memorandum of understanding MOU regarding the bilingual probationary period on November 25, 2024. CSEA ratified the proposed tentative agreement. It is appropriate at this time to conduct a public hearing. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts the memorandum of understanding bilingual probationary period between the California Schools Employee Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District.
I'm moved.
Second. Moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Ms. Alexander. Motion passed. Seven point five. Public hearing and adoption of memorandum of understanding reproductive law leave between the California Schools Employee Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District. The Board of Education will hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the memorandum of understanding between the California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District on October 23, 2024. The California Schools Employee Association, Chapter 183, CSEA, and the district agree to the memorandum of understanding regarding reproductive law leave on November 25, 2024. CSEA ratified the proposed tentative agreement. It is appropriate at this time to conduct a public hearing. There are no comments. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the memorandum of understanding reproductive law leave between the California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District. Do you have a motion? I'm moved.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Medina and second by Dr. Wyatt. Dr. Wyatt? Thank you. Motion carries. Seven point six. Public hearing and adoption of memorandum of understanding update probationary period between the California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District. The Board of Education will hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the memorandum of understanding updated probationary period between the California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District on October 23, 2024. The California Schools Employee Association, Chapter 183, and the district agree to the memorandum of understanding regarding updated probationary period on November 25, 2024. CSEA ratified the proposed tentative agreement. It is appropriate at this time to conduct a public hearing. Do you have any comments? No comments. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the memorandum of understanding between the California Schools Employees Association, Chapter 183, and San Bernardino City Unified School District. I'm moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Medina. Motion passed. Seven point seven. Public hearing and adoption of memorandum of understanding state of emergency wildfires between the San Bernardino Teachers Association and San Bernardino City Unified School District. The Board of Education will hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the memorandum of understanding state of emergency wildfires between the San Bernardino Teachers Association and San Bernardino City Unified School District on October 1, 2024. The San Bernardino Teachers Association and the district agree to the memorandum of understanding regarding state of emergency wildfires on October 2, 2024. SBTA ratified the proposed tentative agreement. It is appropriate at this time to conduct a public hearing. No comments. Be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the memorandum of understanding state of emergency wildfires between the San Bernardino Teachers Association and San Bernardino City Unified School District. I'm moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Medina and second by Ms. Alexander. Ms. Medina?
While she's doing the tally, I definitely want to have maybe the board take advantage of taking a group picture before we head into closed session.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Motion passed. Eight point oh, closed session. Eight point one, closed session, public comments. This is the time that members of the public are provided an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under their closed session agenda item. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Do you have any public comments? No comments. Thank you. Eight point two, closed session agenda. As provided by the law, the board will adjourn to closed session for consideration of the following. All right, back from closed session. Nine point oh, action reported from closed session. Nine point one, approval of middle school vice principal. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Noria Mansori, middle school vice principal, school site effective date, work, year, and salary to be determined.
I'm moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman and second by Ms. Medina. Motion passed.
All right, President Zabaios, board. Mauricio, I have the pleasure, the opportunity to introduce to you tonight the next vice principal at Chavez Middle School, Mrs. Noria Mansori. She has over fourteen years of educational experience here in the district. Chavez Middle School teacher, teacher leader, currently MTSS TOSA. Had gone through our administrative, aspiring administrators program, came out with flying colors. With over fourteen years, being very data-driven, loves the community, has the total support of Chavez, the panel, the parents, students, teachers. Board, I introduce to you tonight, Mrs. Noria Mansori.
Thank you, Dr. Funches. Good evening, board, cabinet members, and Superintendent Ariano. I'd like to say thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to help me continue growing as a professional and now as a leader. In the district in San Bernardino, I've come across many leaders, inspiring leaders, that have taught me to grow professionally, and I'd like to thank them. And I'd also like to thank my family members that are here tonight and my colleagues and my friends for always supporting me and encouraging me. And I'm very excited to start this new journey and continue supporting my community. Thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations. Nine point two, expulsion of students. The Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, of facts, and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. I'm moved.
Second.
We're going to go ahead and call for the vote. President Zabaios? I voted. Aye. Motion passed. Nine point three, revocation of suspension of expulsion. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation of positive youth development of this order which revokes a previously suspended expulsion order. The student violated the conditions of the suspension of the expulsion order. Therefore, in accordance with Education Code Section 48917, the board does hereby order the expulsion of the student with birth date as listed.
I'm moved.
Second. It's moved by Mr. Tillman and second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed. Nine point four. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses but remanded to youth court to other means of correction. The Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with the identification number listed as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. I'm moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Medina. Motion approved. Nine point five. Petition to expunge, rescind, sealing of record, or modify youth court or expulsion. The Board of Education authorizes the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. I'm moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Alexander and second by Ms. Medina. Motion carries. Nine point six, lift, readmit of expulsion of students. The Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with board rules and regulations and in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. I'm moved.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Medina and second by Dr. Wyatt. Motion passed. Nine point seven, other closed session action. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to dismiss the following classified employee from his or her employment with the district HR-C class-24-25-02-ER. I'm moved.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Medina and second by Mr. Tillman. It's not saving, but it did go through. Awesome. Thank you. Ten point oh, student board member. Ten point one, reports and comments. I believe our board members are no longer here with us. So eleven point oh, administrative reports and presentations. Eleven point one, first-period interim fiscal report. Terry Koenig, Associate Superintendent Business Facilities and Operations, and staff will present the first report interim financial Terry Koenig, Associate Superintendent Business Facilities and Operations, and staff will present the first report interim financial report.
Good evening, President Sabios and Vice President Grande, Superintendent Ariano, and Board of Trustees, Cabinet. Uh, tonight I'll be presenting with, uh, Ms. Trias Huey, the first interim. The presentation will be loaded momentarily. You do have a copy, uh, in front of your, um, desk area. The, uh, first interim budget is our first opportunity to look at revenue and expenditure that have transpired from July one through October thirty-first of this year. Uh, it also is our opportunity to, uh, reflect the adjustments from, uh, the adopted budget that was done in June. Uh, and also, it is with pleasure to share with the Board that we will be submitting a positive certification, uh, to the county, uh, for this interim report. Fiscal outlook, state budget. The state budget will, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year will be, uh, shared with our, uh, by our governor next month. In January. However, in November, the legislative analyst released their report that, uh, is very critical to the development of the governor's twenty-five, twenty-six budget proposal. Some of the highlights that came out of that report, I wanted to share with the Board specifically regarding the outlook for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year where the budget is, as they said in the report, roughly balanced. So there was, uh, some, uh, spending adjustments, uh, some rainy day fund usage, and also some temporary revenue, um, received, uh, to the tune of about five, uh, billion dollars that has allowed the budget to be projected to be roughly balanced as we go into twenty-five, twenty-six. State revenues are running above projections, approximately seven billion dollars. Uh, there is a potential for two-point-eight billion increase to Prop ninety-eight funding, which is our main funding source in twenty-five, twenty-six. The specifics of that two-point-eight billion, uh, to the Prop ninety-eight, uh, fund, uh, will be shared again at the, uh, governor's budget release next month. However, it is tempered with the state deficit exceeding, uh, the, uh, out, the expenditures outpacing the revenue. So they are working on, uh, expenditure reductions, uh, throughout the out-years. The project, the projected statutory COLA increase, uh, is, they're looking at a two-point-four-six percent funded COLA for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is a little above earlier forecasts. And then in the subsequent out-years, they're projecting, uh, over three percent of COLA at least for the next three out-years. There are some key concerns that was brought up in the report, specifically market volatility. We know that in personal income tax, uh, the state of California, uh, relies on the, uh, top wage earners to, uh, pay approximately fifty percent of the, uh, tax revenue. And that would be the, uh, the one percent, uh, of the highest, um, paid, uh, folks who live in California. Um, and then market volatility can definitely play into the, uh, the, excuse me, the income. Also, the California unemployment rate, uh, is projected to be, uh, right now as of, uh, October, five-point-four percent for California and four-point-two percent for the nation at large. Assumptions, budgets, and multi-year projections. First, just wanted to remind and review with the Board the assumptions we used in building the budget for this year, the adopted budget. Uh, COLA was one-point-oh-seven percent, and that didn't change through first interim. You'll do notice some, uh, green arrows which shows some, uh, increases in what we were initially assuming in terms of enrollment, uh, actual daily attendance and then funded ADA, uh, tended to, uh, tick up a little bit, which is to our benefit. And then the unduplicated pupil percentage did, uh, come down about a half percent, um, in our first interim report. Next slide. The two out-year assumptions, uh, stayed the same as it was presented during, uh, budget adoption in June. We await the, uh, update from the, uh, School Services DART Board, uh, and what the governor presents next month. And we also rely on the county message, uh, before we, uh, insert any of our new adjustments in terms of the data in calculating our, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget and subsequent out-years. Next slide, multi-year projections. I've, I've broken this up into two areas. One is the unrestricted side and then the restricted side. Uh, looking at line one, the beginning fund balance, when we started the twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget, we saw an ending fund ba, uh, excuse me, a beginning fund balance of seventy-six-point-four million. And then it, in first interim, we're showing a one-hundred-and-nineteen, um, point-four million, uh, beginning fund balance. And this was largely due in part to the ESER funds sunsetting and offsetting a lot of the, uh, cost items that helped backfill our beginning fund balance. Uh, revenue stayed relatively, uh, flat, if you will. There was a seven million dollar decrease related to interest and transportation calculations. And our expenditures had a slight decrease, uh, with an offsetting, uh, numbers on, uh, uh, classified and certificated and benefits. If you look on line five, the, uh, increased-decrease to fund balance, uh, that fair, uh, stayed fairly constant at around fifty million dollars, where we are addressing that, uh, over expenditure of, of, uh, uh, versus our revenue dollars, uh, in the, uh, out-years, you'll notice that the, uh, goes from fifty-one-point-seven million this year, um, and then goes to the thirty-seven and then down to eight-point-two. And that is the concerted effort by the district to address, um, our expenditures in a strategic way that does not impact our programs in the classrooms. Uh, any fund balance, uh, aligns with that. As you can see, it, it drops to, projected to drop to sixty-seven million at the end of this year, um, thirty million next year, and then twenty-two, uh, in the out-years. Still able to make our two percent required reserve. Now, this does not reflect any negotiated, um, um, values that have, uh, not come before the Board, and it does not, uh, reflect any potential changes that the LAO, um, highlighted in the report. That will be reflected, uh, at the second interim. The next slide is the restricted side, uh, of the budget. And these restricted dollars typically are earmarked for certain pro, uh, programs like our Extended Learning Opportunity Program, our Titles One, Two, Three, and Four programs, and so forth. Those restricted dollars, um, in the beginning fund balance, again, took a tick up, uh, primarily due to some, uh, fallout or carryover from the prior year. Uh, and if you look at our revenues, uh, in lines two and three, our expenditures, uh, there's a slight tick up in both revenues and the expenditures as we recognize the unearned income and expend it down. You'll see a slight tick up in line five, uh, the, uh, decrease, uh, to the fund balance. And then it kind of levels off in the two out-years. This is not deficit spending. This is strictly spending down these, uh, restricted dollars as we, uh, place them into budget with aligned expenditures. The ending fund balance then, uh, aligns with those reductions, uh, this year and then in the subsequent out-years. Next slide. Uh, considerations and next steps. We want to keep an eye on the current California national economy, uh, particularly after the, uh, the, the recent election. Uh, we also want to keep our, our eyes on our ADA and enrollment as well as, um, intentionally addressing the costs to better align with our revenues, um, at the district level. Our next steps is Board approval, uh, of the first interim and submission of this, uh, first interim to the County Office of Education. Also, the governor's, uh, January, uh, release of the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget proposal next month. And then, uh, we'll have, uh, Ms. Kimber Sargent and Ed Services present our twenty-four, twenty-five LCAP update, uh, in January. With that, Board, that is the presentation and update for first interim. Uh, we are here to, uh, receive any questions you might have.
Mr. Tillman.
So question on page ten. Uh, says first interim that the expenditures are for restricted are four-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollars, and the revenues are two-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars. That just seemed like a big difference. Is, is that normal?
Yeah. Yeah, there's also, uh, line four shows the contributions that came out of the, uh, unrestricted side, that hundred-and-five million, which also contributes into the expenditures for, like, special ed and also for our, our routine maintenance and repair.
But that means that you subtract that from the four-fifty-four?
It's added to the revenue. So that hundred-and-five is, is an increase, uh, to, that would make that basically, uh, receiving revenue of about three-hundred-and-eighty-two million dollars.
And that's normal, you're saying?
Yeah.
We do that every year?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and so the additional extra spending is one-time cost, or?
Yes, that, for, for these restricted programs, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you for your report. Um, my question is kind of forward-thinking. Um, as we go on to post-election and into a new administration, there's potentially going to be some impact, uh, particularly with funding related to Department of Education. I know a lot of our funding comes from the state of California, but I'm just wondering from a financial standpoint or just looking at our overall, um, finances, have you given it in consideration, like, what we should be thinking about? Or, you know, what your crystal ball is kind of disclosing, what we should think about?
Yes, uh, that's a great question, Ms. Alexander. When we've, we've had, uh, several conversations about the impact. The, the, the president doesn't have the wherewithal to simply abolish a, a department that would take legislative, uh, action. With that said, I, I think, um, you, you know, my, our conversations, the, the, the crystal ball is looking at where they might reduce the, um, that layer of, uh, perhaps redundancy at the, uh, at the, uh, federal level where it becomes more of a straight pass-through block grant, uh, to the California Department of Education, and then it gets pushed out, uh, to the districts. So I've not seen an immediate, nor have I heard anything from, um, uh, both Trias and Kimber were at a recent, uh, uh, Brewstein and Menazevit Conference, uh, where they highlighted and discussed the impact of the election. Um, and although that was a discussion, a topic of discussion, it wasn't a necessary topic of concern.
Thank you. So based on what you have in terms of just the projections for twenty-five, twenty-six, you think we're pretty solid based on just perhaps any impact?
Yes, I, I, I feel very confident, uh, particularly for over the next couple of, of years, uh, particularly the, the two out-years, that we are on solid footing, uh, with federal programming. Yes.
Mr. Tillman?
Uh, I think the federal, um, the federal government's budget, uh, fiscal year is October first?
Sir.
Until, so it goes from October first until?
September thirty.
September thirty.
Yes, sir.
So if something were to happen next year after the new president is sworn in, we know, we would know about that before our next budget that we have to adopt. There'd be some word out there.
Absolutely.
So you could adjust if you had to.
Absolutely.
And, and because the budget goes from October first until next year, that budget's been approved already. So it's pretty safe to say that the monies that are in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five are going to be affected by any changes anyway. So you'll have time to adjust if they make changes.
Yes, and, and definitely to Mr. Tillman's point, we will definitely keep the Board informed, um, of any, any changes that we see on the horizon.
All right, thank you so much.
Ma'am, thank you.
Okay, moving on to eleven point O administrative, sorry, twelve point O action items. Twelve point one. Personnel report number ten dated December seventeen, twenty-twenty-four, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. This report.
That's presented. I'm moved.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Tillman and second by Ms. Medina. Vote please. Motion passed. Twelve point two. Approval of the charter renewal petition for Public Safety Academy. On September sixteen, twenty-twenty-four, Jennifer Stickle, lead petitioner for the Public Safety Academy of San Bernardino, submitted a charter renewal petition to the Charter Schools, Charter School Operations Department. A public hearing was conducted on November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four to consider the level of support for the charter petition. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves a charter renewal petition for the Public Safety Academy of San Bernardino, July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirty, twenty-thirty.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Ms. Alexander. Motion passed.
Thank you, Board. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Twelve point three. Approval of the annual and five-year reportable fees report for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Medina, second by Mr. Tillman. Motion passed. Twelve point four, approval to name building M of Indian Springs High School. On July second, twenty-twenty-four, the Board of Education requested that board policy be followed with regards to the naming of buildings. Per Board Policy seven-three-one-zero, a naming committee was formed and included nine community members. It is recommended that the following resolution be adopted. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves naming building M of Indian Springs High School to the, to Michael G. Gallo Innovation Lab as recommended by the District Naming Committee.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Motion passed. Twelve point five. Approval to rename the Cardinal Child Development Center. On July second, twenty-twenty-four, the Board of Education requested that board policy be followed regarding the naming of buildings per Board Policy seven-three-one-zero, a naming committee was formed and included nine community members. It is recommended that the following resolution be adopted. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves renaming the Cardinal Child Development it resolved, the Board of Education approves renaming the Cardinal Child Development Center to the Francis Grice Cardinal Child Development Center as recommended by the District Naming Committee.
Moved.
Ms. Medina?
I'll second it, but I I just wanted to find out with Francis Grice, I know I I actually was had originally recommended her for the Welcoming Center because of the type of work that she did. I'm curious when they decided for this location, which I think is great, it's it's honorable. But I'm wondering, when it comes to the Child Development Center, did the committees make a suggestion why this site and not another?
Thank you. And Terry, you can provide some more information, but the committee, based on the research that they did, felt that Francis Grice was a big supporter of preschool education and felt that that was a very appropriate naming. In terms of the Welcoming Center, the committee was not able to come to a consensus.
Yeah, I I'm I'm getting that part, but I'm just curious because I know that from what I've known. But if they were able to find, you know, information that she was on regards to the preschools, because I know for the work that she's done, and I've spoken to her before she passed, was more on civil rights and it was on desegregation and all of that. So that was like a bigger impact. I mean, this is a big impact, but her work was at a larger scale. So, okay.
So, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. This is just kind of going along with what Mr. Board Member Resolts Medina said, and, you know, and if it's not part of this, please let me know, that if the naming committee didn't come up with a name, could the board supersede that name of building if we choose to do so? I just want to know, it's just a thought. Any building for that matter, but in this case, the Welcoming Center, yes.
I'm sure they're probably going to have that as a future discussion item, but for this, um, okay.
Ms. Abaliz Grande?
Well, I, you know, I'm sorry that they didn't come to consensus because that tells me that they didn't do their job, you know? I mean, that's, I think I'd have sent them back in there and said, come out and give us something, you know? I just, I'm disappointed. I I think, you know, maybe we should get some new members or or make it larger or change the policy.
Mr. Tillman?
The committee's only going to recommend to the board names. The board can take it upon itself to name any building that they want. So you can't get mad at committee members. The agendizer ourselves, put some names out there and name it if that's what you want to do. But there's no reason to be upset about the committee. We do it ourselves. It's a tough decision.
Mrs. Grande, please vote.
Nothing's coming up. You've got it.
Motion passed. 12.6 Resolution in Support of the Use of Savings on Other Higher-Priority Capital Outlay Projects.
I'm moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Medina. Vote, please. Motion passed. 12.7 Resolution Approving Addendum to the Certified EIR for the Family Resource Center and District Police Headquarters, approving the modifications, approved project, school number 2018081056, approving the modifications to Welcoming Resource Center and District Public Safety Headquarters Project, project, modified project, and delegating authority to staff to execute the notice of determination.
Moved. Again.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Motion passed. 12.8 Resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, authorizing the sale and issuance of note to exceed 36 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation funding, bonds in one or more series, approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, bonds purchase agreements, forward, delivery bond purchase agreements, and continuing disclosure certificates, approving the form of one or more official statements, and authorizing related actions.
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Ms. Alexander.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Motion passed. 12.9 Resolution of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, authorizing the execution and delivery of certificates of participation evidencing principal in an aggregate amount of not to exceed 95 billion, approving a ground lease, a lease agreement, a trust agreement, a certificate purchase agreement, an official statement, and a continuing disclosure certificate with respect to such certificates and authorizing related actions.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Motion passes. 13.0 Consent Items. 13.1 Approval of Consent List. Are there any items to pull?
Moved. Second. Now you asked for that.
Oh, are there any items to pull? No items. Motion passed. 14.0 Reports and Comments by Union Organizations. 4.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association. No report. 4.2 California School Employees Association. No report. 14.3 Communications Workers of America. No report. 14.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. No report. 15.0 Mandated Policy Revisions. 15.1 Board Policy 5127, Graduation Ceremonies and Activities. The district is continuing to update board policies that do not reflect the latest mandated state and federal law language in order to facilitate the approval and adoption process policy submitted with only mandated language revisions do not require going through the policy subcommittee and can be adopted on the first reading. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts Board Policy 5127, Graduation Ceremonies and Activities as presented.
Moved. Again.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. 15.2 Board Policy 6153, School Sponsored Trips. Two of the three revisions for this policy were mandated additions, and the board policy subcommittee did review and approve the policy. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts Board Policy 6153, School Sponsored Trips as presented.
Second.
I need a motion.
I'm moved. I mean, Zach, did you?
He said second by accident.
Okay, so I'll second.
A move by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Medina. Motion passed. 16.0 Reports and Comments. 16.1 Board Members. And I will start with, Mr. Tillman?
No report.
All right, so I do have one request for consensus, and that's with the Facility Subcommittee has been coming together for the past few months and has come up with recommendations. So with the help of Facilities Department and the attorneys, of course, we are ready to have on the agenda, and I'm looking for consensus for the CWA language to be added on the agenda, either the first or second board meeting in January. So I'd like to go around and have consensus on that. We have at least four?
Yeah.
So if we can have that in the agenda, either on the first or the second board meeting of January, thank you.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first of all, welcome to Michael Santos as our newest board member. Great to have you on the board, looking forward to working with you. I wanted to also say thank you to all my family and friends that came out, particularly my parents, my mom who swore me in, actually formally, it was by Superintendent Ariano, but I appreciate former President Tillman allowing me to do that, so thank you. And my mom, you know, taught for LA Unified for over 30 years, so it was really special for her. And it was special for me, too. And then my daughter that was holding the Bible is also in education, so I tried to do the triangular effect. And then my father also taught at Compton Unified, but thank you to all my other kids, my son, and my other daughter was there, and my husband, and then all my family and friends that came out, really appreciated the different organizations that were represented. And, you know, I just appreciate the assistance they provided. Somebody turn off my mic. Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated Incorporated, links, and just all of my friends and family. And also, special thank you to, now she's President Doughty for San Bernardino County Board, for just her encouragement over the past two years. So I just wanted to say thank you to all those people and more, and then also the board here for appointing me. And now that I've been elected, I really appreciate just the opportunity. So without you all, I would not be here. So thank you. Like many, all the board members, I attended CSBA, and it was very informative. We learned a lot. I think we all brought some information and put it in our toolkit. And I'm just hoping that, you know, we are able to incorporate maybe some of the ideas that we learned about, or at least be conscientious in terms of our efforts related to just as we go into a new administration next year, just being vigilant about just making the best decisions on behalf of our students. Funding, to me, is really important. So thank you, Terry, for presenting to us today. And I know that, you know, of course, it's probably two years out for us, but I think we need to just be very conscientious about that. Some other items, like Entrepreneur High School, great job. And then the other presentation for Margaret Hill Academy, you know, that presentation was really good for the charter school, so congratulations to everybody that came out. I had one concern, I, not so much, are we doing the right thing? But when the CSO officers came, I felt like they have come before. So I was just wondering, maybe we could consider just maybe having a more of a meeting, a sit-down meeting with them to just to hear them out and make sure that they're being heard. That's that's really my only request. This is their second time, and I think that there is maybe some comments that were made that maybe they felt like they needed to present a little bit, give us a little bit more detail. And it's just a matter of just letting, making sure that they know that we're here and we're listening to them. And then the parent from Pacoima who brought up the EXL program, the unfair treatment, I just want us to be able to follow up with them on that. She seemed like she followed the proper rules of protocol by talking to the principal, but it seems as if that issue has continued according to how it was presented. So it's just a matter of just going back, checking in with the parent, making sure that we're listening to them, and then also addressing it with the principal. I mean, there's, I just want to make sure everybody's being heard and we're addressing it accordingly. That would be my only request. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abaliz Grande?
I did attend a wonderful Christmas play in Fontana put on by our own SOAR Charter School, and it was quite interesting. It was a mystery song and dance kind of thing, and Santa was missing and they had to find out. And after about an hour, I wanted to leave because I was tired, and my husband didn't want to go because he said, I have to find, wait, they're almost going to find him. I know they will. So we stayed away then. Very cute. I do have some questions that I've been wanting to ask and find out. I would like to find out, how long has Carmack and Anderson been without a principal and whose idea was that to take that away from them? And I I don't agree. For decades, they all had a principal, Anderson's had principals, and those children need a need a principal, the teachers need one, they need a leader. So I would like to know when and why that occurred. Secondly, I believe that all of our schools named after a person or, you know, even a prominent street, they should have a day to honor their their namesake and find out more about that that person, Gracianna Gomez, Roger Ciantan, Mildred Henry, Holcomb, and many others. And it it's part of our history. And I think it's very important that the children get to know that person and and have their their photograph or, you know, the area where they were from, I don't know, Fairfax. There were certain things when the city was coming to fruition. So I'd like to see that happen. And I'd like to, a list of all of our schools that were named after a person or something of significance. And then lastly, I wanted to, I would like to see an updated flow chart or organizational chart of our district and all of its overall departments. I would think when I started, I I had one and it was run off and not well-done at all. It was very hard to read. Also, an organizational chart under each of our assistant superintendents and the departments they're responsible for. I I think, I want to see, I want to look at the, you know, I don't know, I want to say the workload. I want to see if, you know, is there one area that's that they're responsible for too many things? Because it seems like sometimes that they don't know what's going on in their own department. And I that troubles me because, you know, we are so big, 47,000 children. I I don't know, how many employees do we have? So I'd like to get more information on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few shout-outs to some of our programs. Shannon Hills Middle School won the Southern California Region Cheer Competition, so a great job to them. And then a number of us were at the San Bernardino High School Theater to 60th Anniversary Ribbon Cutting, as well as for the re-modernization. And just fantastic job to everybody involved. They were able to keep the old architecture on the outside and make it a brand-new theater on the inside and keep some of the original lighting. So just, it looks fantastic. And then some absolutely amazing student performances, one right after another, after another, and definitely a reflection of the investment into our kids and our community. So great job to everyone there. And then at CSBA, as we've heard, a lot of us were there. And again, congratulations to our teen music workshop. We'll probably hear about them again, I'm sure, sometime this evening. But as always, they just did an amazing performance and represent our city and our community and our district at the highest level. So great job to them again, as well as a lot of record officials, too, that just came out and said, awesome job. They've seen tags at San Bernardino, like, oh, those were your kids. It's nice when you hear that about San Bernardino. Let me just say it like that. And then our three student board members and our colleague, Ms. Alexander. And then our three student board members, and our colleague Ms. Alexander facilitated our student board panel, and wow, they talked about hitting a grand slam, those kids knocked it out of the park, just were phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal, and again, represented us at the highest level. And then the first ever Jane Daniels Toy Giveaway at Cajon High School, and President Tillman was there as well, and again, thank you to all the folks there, and we have some folks to thank for all the wonderful gifts, and that was Ozell Jewelry, Jacob Teakin, and Dr. Ronnie DeWood, he's a, I believe, a plastic, a dermatologist out of Redlands, and then of course, our staff, Samarita PD, and everybody that came out to participate in the toy giveaway. And then a big shout-out to Young Visionaries Youth Leadership Academy for their winter extravaganza, thousands and thousands of kids at that event, that was, that was amazing, and then again, just a lot of our community partners out there contributing to our city and to our kids, and again, just making San Bernardino City a better place to live. Thank you.
Mr. Santos?
Oh, thank you, I just wanted to say thank you to the board, Cabinet Superintendent, for making this a very welcoming environment, I know I'm learning a lot, but yeah, just thank you, and I'm excited to do any work that we need to do, and looking forward to that, and then just a shout-out to my baby boy who thinks I'm a YouTube star now, because he can see me on YouTube, so he's still up, you know, hi Mikey.
Thank you so much. I just want to say also, thank you to all of my family that came out, you know, they're always very, very supportive, and I definitely could not do anything that I do without them and their support, so a huge thank you to you guys. Also, a big thank you to Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. for having sworn me in today, I really appreciate that. And thank you to all of my colleagues for voting me as president and trusting me, and I really look forward to, you know, doing my very, very best. I think that if you know anything about me, you know that I do have very high expectations of myself, and so please, you know, any guidance is welcome as I move forward and learn, that is my desire, and yeah, so thank you so much for that. Also, welcome, Mr. Santos, again, we are very, very excited to have you and look forward to working with you. To everybody out there, just Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, whatever it is you celebrate, Happy New Years, just, you know, take some time to step away and just enjoy with your families, connect, wishing you all the very, very, very best, and I will see you all here next year. That's it, thank you.
Superintendent, sorry, 16.2 Superintendent and staff.
Thank you very much. First of all, congratulations to Myra, Felicia, and Scott for your reelection, we're very pleased that you're all coming back, and it was a strong vote for the community to have you all back, so congratulations to the three of you. And a big welcome to Mr. Santos for joining this amazing team, and I think you're going to find your board member colleagues to just be a great team to learn from, work with, and have a good time while we're making tough decisions, so welcome to the team. And congratulations to Myra and Mary Ellen for becoming president and vice president, so this is going to be a good duo, and appreciate your deep love for the district and the city. And Danny, I want to thank you for your leadership this past year as president, you set the bar and you hold us to a high standard as well, so it's been a great year and it's going to be a great coming year. And I do want to also echo the California School Boards Association Conference, San Bernardino City Unified was the highlight of the conference. The opening session with teen music workshop just set the stage, and seeing 1,000-plus board members up dancing to our team up there was just amazing, and they never cease to amaze me, they always add another song in there I didn't see coming. Last time, it was Square Biz by Tina Marie, this time, they threw in What You Won't Do by Bobby Caldwell, it was a great rendition of it, so they're just amazing kids. Our student board members and their presentation to a full house, full of board members, superintendent, Felicia did a great job moderating the conversation, but Ana Victoria Chavez, Tatiana Ochoa, Jimena, Preciado, they did such a great job that the superintendent from Garden Grove, who runs an organization called Latinos Unidos, they do a conference each year, reached out to Dr. Rodriguez and I, and invited the three ladies to be part of that conference, so it's just a great day. And then, of course, it ended with San Bernardino City Unified School District receiving another Golden Bell for our special education program, so we really represented well, very proud to be part of this district on that day, it was just awesome. I want to give some kudos out to a couple of our students, Brooklyn Summers from San Gregonia High School, and Emily Almanzal Ruiz from Richardson, who were both selected to be as part of the All-State Honor Band, so I really want to thank Scott Nelson, the band teachers, the principals who know that we are continuing to try to grow these programs and continue to strive for excellence, and to have a couple of students be on the State Honor Band is just incredible, so again, our district is shining and shining bright. I want to give a big thank you to Sarah Home, special education teacher at San Bernardino High School, who hosted their second annual Unified Cornhole Tournament. And the essence behind the tournament is for our students, our intellectually disabled students, paired up with their best buddies, compete in a cornhole competition, and we had students from San Bernardino High School, Cajon, Indian Springs, and Pacific High School compete, and it just warmed my heart on that day to see our students competing, having that opportunity to do something fun, have a little competition, and so I thank Sarah because I know she's working hard on us becoming a unified, what do they call it, a unified activities school or something, there's certain criteria, right, they have to meet. Right, so she's working with our high schools so that we are consistent across the high school, and we're trying to make that connection that I know Board Member Grande has asked us to really think about, is creating that partnership with Special Olympics again, so all of this is going to happen real soon, so Sarah, if you're listening, thank you so much for putting that together. Mary Rowan, I want to thank you and your team, MNO, school police, the folks at San Bernardino High School, anybody who was involved, the ribbon cutting ceremony for the San Bernardino High School Theater was just amazing, the 60-year jubilee was amazing, it was wonderful energy to see grads from San Bernardino High School from different decades show up, and we took the alumni picture in front of the Cardinal City mural on East Street, it was just a beautiful event, and the showcase inside the theater, Mary Rowan, I just really want to commend you for how you picked the different acts, the diversity, the different type of talent, the brilliance, the age brackets, I believe the preschool kids took the show, right, the little ballerinas from preschool, but thank you for showing our community the vast breadth of arts that happened in this district, but it was a wonderful event, thank you, and thank you to all the board members who were able to attend. Shout-out to everybody who was involved in putting together the new esports room at San Gregonia High School, I had the opportunity to go there for the ribbon cutting, and sit down and actually play a couple of games with some of the students, which I had no idea what I was doing, but they were killing the superintendent real quick and laughing about it, but thank you to our district for continuing to focus in the board, thank you for your support of these spaces where kids feel engaged, a sense of belonging, and want to be at school, it's just amazing, and I believe that's our second or third esports room, and I know EXL had a big part of that, so thank you to EXL and the San G team. And then last, I just want to highlight, and I got the name here, Henry Elementary School. The teacher's name, Diego Napolis, he's a teacher at Henry Elementary School, reached out to Starbucks and put our name in the hat for, you know, some sort of a Christmas gift for the school, and somehow, our name was pulled, every student in the school received a $100 gift card from Starbucks, and one class, I believe, received a set of Nikes, right, Nike shoes, and I know, yeah, what were they?
A pair of black and white Nikes.
Black and white Nikes, so great event, it was a great just moment for the kids there, and just, I want to thank the teacher and the principal for just trying to find these opportunities to bring joy in school every day. And with that, I just wanted to wish everyone across the district and our community a very happy holiday season. Thank you, President Silias.
Thank you so much. 18.0, no, sorry, 17.0 summary of board members' requests, 17.1 review of requests.
Good evening. The first request is from Mrs. Rosales Medina, she requested for consensus for the CWA language to be added on the agenda, consensus was perceived. The second request was from Mrs. Alexander, she requested if we could consider to have a sit-down meeting with the CSO officers, so they know that we are here to listen to them. The third request is from Mrs. Alexander, she would like someone to follow up on the public comment made by the Paakuma parent regarding her two daughters. The next request is from Mrs. Grande, she is wondering how long has Carmack had a principal and Anderson does not, she's request...
It's my understanding they both don't have a principal at this time.
Carmack and Harmon, sorry.
Carmack and, and, yeah, Carmack, Carmack, I think it's Carmack, the special ed, and the Anderson for the older kids.
She is requesting that someone follows up with this concern. The next request is from Mrs. Grande, she would like an updated flow chart or org chart of the district, and also specifically under each of the assistant superintendents to see which departments or areas they are in charge of. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you, 18.0, meaning adjournment?
In memorandum.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, 18.0, meaning adjournment, 18.1 in memoriam. The board would like to recognize and close the board meeting in memory of... Is that Caesar? Caesar Bruno started his career with the district after serving 27 years in the United States Air Force and retiring as a Chief Master Sergeant. He was hired in January 1984 as a teacher at San Bernardino High School, where he remained for his entire career with the district. Chief Bruno taught the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Program, educating and training high school cadets in citizenship, community service, and instilling personal responsibility, character, and self-discipline, while giving them a perspective on what a possible military career would be like. Chief Bruno also supervised and supported the JROTC cadets at parades in San Bernardino and throughout the inland empire. Chief Bruno retired from SBCUSD in August of 1996, but returned a year later as a substitute teacher to continue teaching JROTC cadets until June of 2001. Caesar Bruno passed away at the age of 88 on November 14, 2024, he will be greatly missed and remembered through the legacy of his family, friends, and the many San Bernardino High School JROTC cadets he taught throughout his career with the district. 18.0, adjournment? Moved, second.